I'm going to call the meeting to order for the Iowa City City Council, regular formal meeting on February 4th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. Welcome everybody to your city hall. Roll call please.
Burgess?
Here.
Mims?
Here.
Salee?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Teague?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Weiner?
Here.
All right, so we have some special guests in here today that we're going to honor. Moving on to item number two, which is the Student Leadership Awards. And I'm going to come up here and I'm going to invite three people to the stage with me. Thank you. I'm going to ask that Hannah Braun, Benjamin Hacker, and Olga Tenev join me. These are our student leaders and they've come to accept an award from the city council and very happy that you all are here with us today. So, we're going to start with you Hannah, and what would you like to say today?
Okay. I believe being a good leader in any community involves helping others, being kind, leading by example, being a good listener, and being trustworthy. Ways that I show these traits include being a Girl Scout since kindergarten and being on Safety Patrol, where I love having a job that helps my school. I also enjoy assisting my teachers and peers in the classroom. I'm part of the junior staff at my after-school program where I help out the staff and younger kids as needed. I also love music and play in two bands along with volleyball and swimming. Thank you city council along with my teachers and peers for this honor.
And you have some very special people here with you. Would you like to state their names?
Well Jill Braun, Terry Braun, and then my two teachers, Ms. Cordova and Ms. Mueller.
Thank you all for coming and being supportive. All right, I'm going to move right over here and thank you so much for being a part here as well.
It's an honor to have this award. I think leadership is about being a good role model, having a growth mindset, and being a great example. I think I'm perfect for this leadership award because I'm positive, I do my work well, as a good role model would, and I have a growth mindset. One example of my growth mindset is math. I remember in Khan Academy, I was struggling to even get a single percent. Now I'm doing sixth grade level math because I refuse to give up. In addition, I'm helpful. My dad said that there was a sick girl who was one of his patients. She wasn't feeling well, so I offered to give the girl my old National Geographic magazines. A day later, my dad updated me that I made a little girl's day. From then on, I felt pretty good about what I did. So this is why I think I earned this award. Thanks for giving me this award.
Good. And I got a chance to meet your family as well. Will you tell us who's here with you?
Veselin Tenev, Christina Caliva, and my grandma, and my grandma Pepe.
Great. Thank you all for coming and being supportive. All right, word to you Benjamin.
I'm Benjamin and I think I was nominated for this award for several reasons. One reason is I am kind to other students by respecting people and their ideas. Another reason is that I listen to whoever is speaking and only talk what I am called on. The third reason is I'm very focused on what I'm supposed to do when I'm on Safety Patrol. The fourth reason is I always follow classroom expectations. The fifth reason is that when I struggle with my schoolwork, I never give up. Finally, I handle it well when I go to crowded places like the lunchroom or classroom even though I don't like them. Thank you for this honor.
And who do you have with you today?
Dean, my mom, Deana Bishara, Ms. Cordova, my teacher, and my two grandmas.
They are super proud of you. Yes, yes. I am so honored to give this leadership award to each of you today. 3A is a proclamation for Black History Month. You have demonstrated in your words to us and through your actions in the community And I'm going to read this. how helpful you are and how a great student and deserving of this student leadership Whereas Black History Month celebrates the contributions that persons of the African award you all are. I'm going to read this today and you can insert your name. diaspora have made to American history in their struggle for freedom and equality, and They're all very similar, but your names are the thing that is different. So, Student Leadership Award. whereas persons of the African diaspora have played a central role in our nation's history. For your outstanding qualities of leadership within Schimick Elementary as well as the But for too long historians ignored or glossed over their contributions and the injustices community and for your sense of responsibility and helpfulness to others, we recognize you they have suffered. And whereas in February 1926, Dr. Carter G. Woodson, noted black scholar and son of Hannah, you Benjamin, and Olga. As an outstanding student leader, your community is proud of you and this is presented by former slaves, launched the celebration of Negro History Week, the precursor of Black the Iowa City City Council today. History Month to yearly celebrate and help rectify the omission of African-Americans And I'm so happy that you all are here with us. Please give them another round of applause. from history books. And whereas we as Iowa Cityans have an opportunity to recognize that Black History is a part Thank you. of world history and thereby we need to co-construct a future that celebrates Black History every You can have your seat. Great. day. For just one month isn't enough. I believe it's so important to highlight the contributions of Black Americans to some of the liberties, activities, and products that we enjoy today. And whereas while the observance of Black History Month calls our nation's attention to continued need to better racism and to build a society that lives up to its democratic ideas, this year's celebration and recognitions are especially significant as we celebrate the 65th anniversary of Rosa Parks being arrested in Montgomery, Alabama for refusing to give up her seat to a white passenger sparking the citywide boycott that became a critical event in the civil rights movement. And whereas during Black History Month, all are encouraged to reflect on past successes and challenges and look to the future to continue to improve society so that we live up to the ideas of freedom, equality, and justice. Now therefore I, Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2020 to be Black History Month.
Here to accept is Jason Glass.
And Jason, I'm going to have you come up and receive this.
All right.
Yes, thank you so much. Yeah. And I'll have you go to the podium.
Yes.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. These are our Human Rights Commissioners.
On behalf of the Iowa City Human Rights Commission, I formally accept this proclamation. It should go without saying that though it is entirely right that we should honor Black History, that honor cannot be confined to just one month. Black History is American and indeed human history that should be celebrated, studied, and reflected upon with unceasing rigor. Words are powerful, but primarily in so much as they inspire action. Let us then use the words of this proclamation and the opportunity this month provides to highlight the parts of history that have been neglected. We encourage all to use this month as a call to actively learn, to pass on to others the stories that have been too often left out of our history books or part of our collective memory. Let us use these stories and facts to fill in any blind spots we have and understand a fuller picture of our successes, failures, and ongoing challenges. For only in examining the lessons history holds can we use them to build a better future. Again, thank you for highlighting Black History Month and for your continued support of human rights in Iowa City. Thank you.
Thank you Jason. Moving on to item 3B, Proclamation for Iowa Honey Bee Day. Whereas honeybees and native insects are important as pollinators for a third of the food that we eat, honeybees are vital in production of over 90 crops grown across the nation, many of which are in Iowa. And whereas climate change is causing habitat loss, shift in temperatures, and has a negative effect on the health of honeybees and other pollinators, which makes reproduction and resistance to predators and parasites more difficult. And whereas Iowa City is committed to lessening the effect of climate change by reducing greenhouse gas emissions. And whereas Iowa City recognizes the importance of insect habitat and maintains over 1,000 acres of natural areas within Iowa City. And whereas to protect pollinators and insects in our urban ecosystem, Iowa City has also signed unto the mayor's monarch pledge and as a result holds an annual festival to celebrate monarchs and pollinators. And whereas traditionally beekeeping occurred in rural areas of Iowa, but now beekeeping increasingly occurs in urban areas with the rise in interest of hobby beekeepers in Iowa cities and towns for honey production. And whereas honeybees face serious threats for invasive pests, a decreasing bee-friendly forage, a shift in climate, and increase in pressure from pesticides and herbicides. Now therefore I, Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby join other, the governor and other Iowa cities in proclaiming February 13th, 2020 to be Iowa Honey Bee Day in Iowa City and encourage all residents and visitors to join in observing this day and focus on the importance of honeybees and other pollinators to our urban ecosystem and food production to enjoy the honey and other products of honeybees and to assist in reducing the threats to honeybee survival in our community.
Here to accept is Edward St. John.
Edward St. John, thank you.
Thank you. Yes. I'm Edward St. John. I'm a district director for the Iowa Honey Producers Association for the District III. I would like to thank Iowa City Council and the mayor for your support of Iowa Honey Bee Day. Governor Reynolds signed it, a proclamation declaring February 13th as Honey Bee Day. And you're joining other cities such as North Liberty, Correville, Waterloo, Marshalltown, County's Worth, Mitchell, and Johnson County, and also proclaiming your support of Honey Bee Day on the February 13th. Insect pollinators are in trouble. Honeybees are basically the canary in the coal mine. For example, bumblebees are now considered extinct in Canada. Pollinators basically produce, you said one-third, it's actually closer to two-thirds of our food according to USDA. For example, almonds. There's about 2.4 million hives in the United States and over 2 million of those hives are on semi trucks. 2 million hives plus go to California every spring for the almond bloom. They go up to Washington for apples, they go up to North Dakota for canola, all through the United States. They're the ones that keep our food pollinated and create the food, right? In Iowa, honeybee losses every year are 65%. Six and a half hives out of every 10 die. Nationwide, it's about 45%, which both levels are unsustainable. So your support of Honey Bee Day demonstrates your commitment to the importance of understanding pollinators to our food chain and protection of our environment, and I thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you again Edward. Moving on to the consent calendar, which is items number four through nine. May I have a motion to approve as presented?
Move.
Second. Moved by Salee, seconded by Thomas. Discussion? I did just want to make a notation that item 8C, which talks about the maximum property tax levy, because we're set in the public hearing that that date is for our next council meeting date, which is February 18th, Tuesdays from now. Any other discussion? Roll call please.
Burgess?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Motion passed a 7-0. All right, moving on to item number 10, which is Community Comment. And if there's any item that is not on our formal agenda that anyone would like to address, we invite you up to the podium here. We'll ask that you state your name and that you also write it down. There were stickers and there are stickers in the back if you want to use a sticker and post it on the sign-in sheet.
I'm Mary Ann Dennis, and I've been the executive director of the Housing Fellowship for the past 27 years. With the history of a lot of supportive volunteer board members and a dedicated and talented staff, the Housing Fellowship has grown to have a reputation as being a responsible and successful community housing development organization. Many, many people have been instrumental in helping us do our jobs. We have been able to provide nice homes to thousands of families and thousands of kids. I'll be leaving my post at the end of this month and my passion for affordable housing in all aspects has been a source of personal satisfaction to me and afforded me the opportunity to be challenged and also to continue to learn. As you know, Simon Andrew will replace me and he will lead the Housing Fellowship and affordable housing efforts forward. So you all know, we're in good hands. But what I'm really here to say is thank you to the council, past counselors, and the Iowa City staff for your partnership and support. Iowa City has done more than any other community in Iowa to respond to and address the need for affordable housing. So really, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
Hello. My name is Vee Fixmo Rise and I am the Housing Community Development Commissioner Chair of that commission. And I missed the work session. I have a kid who has the flu. So I just wanted to respond to a question that councilperson Burgess asked me last session, we had a joint session, I just kind of wanted to provide some information, just clarifying a little bit like our role in terms of the commission and what we're charged with. So I looked into the bylaws and you know, there's the website of course that has the paragraph on exactly our duties and I can certainly read that. The duties are to assess and review policies and planning documents related to the provision of housing, jobs, and services for low and moderate income residents, to review policies and programs of the Public Housing Authority and the Community Development Division, and making recommendations regarding the same to the city council. To review and make recommendations to the city council regarding the use of public funds to meet the needs of low and moderate income residents, to actively publicize community development and housing policies and programs, and seek public participation in assessing needs and identifying strategies to meet these needs, to recommend to the city council from time to time amendments, supplements, changes, and modifications to the Iowa City Housing Code. I think specifically in Article 3 for our duties under the subsection 2, it says review policies and programs of the Public Housing Authority and Community Development Division and make recommendations regarding the same to the city council. So I think with the Housing Community Development Commission, we've really tried to find policies and procedures for making more transparency and to make the aid-to-agency process a little bit clearer for everybody. I've learned a lot. And I guess I kind of thought this was a really good opportunity to review exactly what our charge is. I feel like that we take it very seriously. We're just a group of volunteers, fortunate enough to work with the likes of Mary Ann Dennis, who I know is retiring. But anyway, I just kind of wanted to offer that clarity and you know, here you are all, so I figured I would just put that out there. And then if there were any further questions about kind of what our role is and kind of where that lies with, I know we're offering a lot of recommendations, we have heated discussions in our commission, but it's because we're passionate and we care. And so anyway, I thank you for your time and please feel free to follow up with me if you have any other further questions. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Majid Adams and to celebrate Black History Month, I want to thank all of you guys and Steph. And to celebrate Black History Month, I want to tell you guys about all the schools and how they're diverse. Iowa's a good school because every school you go to, you see they're all mixed, black and white, and that's what Martin Luther King taught and fought for. He died, he didn't know like if it's ever going to happen, but he believed in himself and look where we are now. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to planning and zoning matters, item number 11. 11A is 218 Commercial Park rezoning. Letter to the Johnson County Planning and Zoning Commission recommending denial of a rezoning for county and county residential to county commercial for approximately 32.96 acres of property located in incorporated Johnson County, south of Route 218 and Riverside Drive. Can I have a motion to approve the letter?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mim, seconded by Salee. And we're going to get a staff presentation. Hello?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Danielle Sisman, Neighborhood and Development Services, she/her/hers. This is the first of two applications related to this property. I'll give the first one regarding the rezoning and then once you do your business, come back and talk about the subdivision request. It was forwarded to us as two applications from the county. Our agreement with them for fringe area, have them go through that process. This is an application submitted by CJ Moynah and Sons for land shown on the screen bounded in yellow. The subject property, as you said, is located in the vicinity of Highway 218 and Riverside Drive, just west of Oak Crest Road, southeast. This is for consideration of a rezoning to a commercial county land use designation. Again, here is the property shown in relationship to the existing zoning, county zoning surrounding it. Also, in relationship to our fringe area agreement boundaries, showing that it is outside our current growth boundary in Area C. It shows the current city limits in green and where the inside of the growth boundary area starts closer to our city limits in purple. If approved, the applicant intends to develop a lot for their own business and sell the remainder. As I mentioned, this is in a fringe area agreement area, that's a component of our comprehensive plan. As was discussed earlier this evening at our work session, the city has an element of control over land even though it is outside our corporate boundaries under this agreement that we have and maintain with the county. It applies to areas outside our city boundaries but within two miles of our corporate limits. Steph does reference that fringe area agreement as a way to review these applications. It contains policy direction and land use decisions outside the city limits where the city has not conducted our own comprehensive planning efforts yet. So it's beyond the area that's typically comprehensive planned within the city but still has some consideration for land use development policies. A little background information about the rezoning, the applicant did come in and kind of go through some changes as it worked through our process based on staff comments that were received from county staff. They had initially proposed a much larger rezoning of 60 acres, but have scaled back the application just to the 30 acres shown kind of in the orangish color there on the screen. Like I said, again, proposing to rezone that to commercial. The previous requests for rezoning included several different types of commercial, this one is just county commercial C District. This does still allow for a wide range of retail uses in businesses, government, and professional offices, and places for amusement. As I said, the applicant's intending to develop one lot in a future subdivision for themselves and potentially sell off the rest of lots for future development. The review criteria that staff uses to review these again is based in the fringe area agreement and comprehensive planning efforts contained in those documents and the city's own comprehensive As you've heard before, our current fringe area agreement is a little bit old and out of date, out of step with some of the updates that the county has undertaken in its own comprehensive planning efforts. And this rezoning is one of those areas that is a little bit out of step from our current agreement. As I said, there's that being out of step from being a little bit old based on the county's comprehensive planning and then there also is a process that the county undertakes annually where they can entertain applicants' own requests to change the comprehensive plan. This land was subject to a request by the applicant to change the county's land use plan even more to include commercial in this area that happened last summer. The staff did provide an advisory comment on that potential plan change at the time that the county made us aware of it. Wasn't a case that came to city council, but the staff did issue an opinion on that and the advisory comments were included in the packet for tonight. We, as staff, did generally oppose the requested change, however ultimately that was a decision that could be made by the county and they did choose to proceed to designate the areas appropriate for future commercial development. And this application is then the follow-up to that comprehensive plan change, applicant requesting a rezoning. As I said again, this is in Fringe Area C, outside the city's growth area. According to our current fringe area agreement, agricultural uses are preferred and land uses are restricted to those that are fairly low in intensity for rural and agricultural use. Just again, I said, going through the compliance with the county's comprehensive plan, the county did change their comprehensive plan and is in compliance with that. However, we do see that as sort of significant deviation from the fringe area agreement and the city's own policy direction for this particular area of near to the city. Talking about next steps in the rezoning, the step that we are at is highlighted in blue on the screen. I said this went through that county future land use plan change, this is a rezoning that follows that. Also on the agenda tonight is the next step, the pending step of the- plan even more to include commercial in this area that happened last summer. The staff did provide an advisory comment on that potential plan change at the time that the county made us aware of it. Wasn't a case that came to City Council, but the staff did issue an opinion on that, and the advisory comments were included in the packet for tonight. We, as staff, did generally oppose the requested change. However, ultimately, that was a decision that could be made by the county, and they did choose to proceed to designate the areas appropriate for future commercial development. And this application is then the follow-up to that comprehensive plan change, applicant requesting a rezoning. As I said, again, this is in Fringe Area C, outside the city's growth area. According to our current fringe area agreement, agricultural uses are preferred and land uses are restricted to those that are fairly low in intensity for rural and agricultural Just again, I said, going through the compliance with the county's comprehensive plan, the county did change their comprehensive plan and is in compliance with that. However, we do see that as sort of significant deviation from the fringe area agreement and the city's own policy direction for this particular area of the, near to the city. Talking about next steps in the rezoning, the step that we are at is highlighted in blue on the screen. I said this went through that county future land use plan change. This is a rezoning that follows that. Also on the agenda tonight is the next step, the pending step of the preliminary plat, and eventually there would be, need to be a final plat before this land could actually be developed. So based on a review of the relevant criteria, staff did recommend denial of the proposed rezoning due to conflict with the existing fringe area agreement. While staff supports the reduction in rezoning of the area and the intensity that the applicant has kind of come to through this process, the intended commercial zoning, we feel, is still in conflict with the current fringe area agreement. It can result in a wide variety of ultimate commercial uses that would be more appropriately developed to city-level density once they would be inside the city and have city services available for them. We see that as a way to kind of control orderly and efficient development of infrastructure and to kind of curtail the frog development, where development goes farther away from the city than it needs to, to support the residents of the city. So as far as the first application tonight, we did not recommend approval of that. The Planning and Zoning Commission upheld the staff's recommendation of denial, and comes before tonight with the recommendation of denial. We don't believe a future conflict resolution meeting with the county is necessary, even though we are recommending against something they've proposed. The city's already discussed this particular property at a conflict negotiation session in September of last year in response to the advisory changes that were being issued on the potential change. So we're not advocating for a conflict resolution meeting. We think this has already been addressed, and everybody's comments have been shared that way. So again, the Planning Commission is forwarding it to you tonight with the recommendation of denial. Now I have to answer questions.
Any questions for Danielle?
What is the situation with city services?
There are no city services for this property. This property would have to be developed to on county well and sanitary services. There are water lines nearby, but sewer lines are not. And typically, we don't provide services outside the city corporate limits.
I'm familiar with the property to the south of this, and that the Mobile Home Court has notoriously been known for poor water quality. Is that, would that be the same well that would be serving that area?
No, this would be a private well, just for the commercial development.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks. Would anyone like to address this from the audience?
Mr. Mayor, Counsel, I'm John Mardner with MMS Consultants. Adam Cost from CJ Moynah and Sons, the applicant, is here as well. I'll just briefly, I think Danielle did a good job of addressing most of the things, issues that have come up on this property. I'd just add, and I think she touched on it briefly, that initial meeting that was held back in September, the future land use amendment that was applied for with the county was for a little over 100 acres of land for commercial. After that meeting, we scaled the application back to 66 acres. The first application that was, that we turned in for the zoning and for the preliminary plat, which I know this is in regards to the zoning, but I'll just briefly mention the preliminary plat as well. The first application for the zoning, the preliminary plat, was actually for 64 acres of ground with 11 lots. And then through conversations with city staff and with county staff, we dialed that, dialed that, the scale of that back to just 32 acres, the 32 acres that's presented on the zoning. And then as you'll see with the preliminary plat, five lots. So we do acknowledge there's a lot of conversation. She mentioned it's a fringe area agreement. There's a lot of conversation that needs to take place to get that up to date. This is kind of an initial step to get the ball rolling in our minds. It allows the applicant to go ahead and start process to get moving with the territory that they want to be into, and then set the area up for future uses, whether it's, you know, whatever it wants to be, as that conversation takes place between the city and the county. That'll let Adam talk.
Good evening. Adam Cost, I'm with CJ Moynah, representing the owner. Been an employee with the company for 15 years. I currently live in Kelowna, just south of town here. Wanted to share just some short-term, long-term goals, just a little bit of vision for what we're doing kind of in the area. We're the folks out that are working hard, trying to get 80 through 80, torn apart and put back, put back together as quick as possible. See, we do a lot of work in the area, a lot of work in Tiffin, Highway 30, Malvern, and so on and so forth. We like the area. I like the area living here. We're looking to put a satellite office down here in Iowa City as part of the use for this. One of those five lots to be available would be for us. We'd like to build our satellite office, and we'd like to recruit the area. Johnson County, looking for young talent. You know, we provide an opportunity for folks to, you know, earn a pretty good wage relative to, you know, others in the industry. As far as the property as a whole, on the, I guess it'd be the west side of Oak Crest Hill Road, about 110 acres. As John had mentioned here from MS, we've narrowed that down to 65 acres. We've actually shrunk that down to 30 acres. We're actually looking at just kind of a Phase 1, which included our lot, would be about eight acres of development. So we acknowledge that there's some work to do. We acknowledge that the city has interest in that corner. We also know that the prime real estate is probably closest to the interchange and probably needs the most homework done, you know, in order to move forward with development there properly. On the east side of the road, we own 80 acres. We're currently working through wetland possibilities with some construction, looking at a wetland bank, ultimately, long-term conservation to go along with that. So I just wanted to share some of those thoughts with you and kind of why we're here, why we're doing what we're doing, why we're asking what we're doing. We realize that it's kind of a tough area between the county and the city, and maybe forcing some conversations that aren't voluntarily happening. However, we're here and we're interested in being a part of it, and we hope that we can be, you know, a part of a larger picture as we move forward here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We won't have any questions.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. Would anyone else like to address this topic? Counsel discussion. I just wanted to make sure that everybody do understand that the P&amp;Z is not recommending, they're recommending the denial, and so that's what we're being asked to support.
Danielle, Danielle, could you come back up just for just a second? I just, I want to clarify both for myself and for the public. We are sending a letter of recommendation. The final decision is up to the Board of Supervisors.
That's correct. For rezoning, the city issues a recommendation to the county for the subsequent plating process. The city could make a determination, but at the rezoning stage, it's just a recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Just want to clarify. I'll support the letter, which recommends denial. I think we know that we're all in the middle of these discussions on getting the fringe area updated, and everybody's actively working on that and trying to get it done. The final decision is in, is in the court of the Board of Supervisors, but given where we're at in that discussion, I think this is a reasonable input or recommendation from the city. It's a great area to get developed, though. We want to.
All right. Roll call, please.
Maams?
Yes.
Ceelee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Item number 11B, 218 Commercial Park Preliminary Plat. Resolution approving preliminary plat of 218 Commercial Park Subdivision, a 32.96 acre, five-lot commercial subdivision with nine outlots located in unincorporated Johnson County, south of Route 218 and Riverside Drive. Hello again. Motion to approve resolution.
So moved.
Second. Moved by ma'am, seconded by Thomas. And now we'll have Danielle address us again.
Thank you, Mayor. As I said, this is the second of two applications related to the same property tonight. This is the preliminary plat application, which was forwarded along with the rezoning you just made a recommendation on. The plating would create five lots and several outlots for open space and future streets. As I said, this application's gone through a little bit of changes as it came through the process that has been scaled back to the, what you're seeing currently on the screen as the concept for the preliminary plat. The staff did review this again to the fringe area agreement. There are separate design standards for infrastructure improvements that go along with plats, whether it's inside or outside the growth boundary. When it's outside the growth boundary, really, there's a city's rural design standard that's followed. The proposed subdivision does meet the standards of the city's rural design standards as expressed in the fringe area agreement for the street infrastructure. I think transportation and planning staff did note, though, eventually overhead lighting might be appropriate on Oak Crest Hill Road should the subdivision continue to develop. That's just a comment, really, at this point. Talking about environmentally sensitive areas, the county does have its own sensitive areas ordinance that would need to be followed for those areas if they're located in this And the, as the applicant stated, they're taking that into account as they design the subdivision. Services for sanitary sewer and water ser, sewer, water service would meet county standards as well, well, well water systems and septic systems either packaged or individual for lots, complying, again, with the county's standards. Just a pre-overview of the steps and development here. This is the blue highlighted step, the preliminary plat. Following this would be eventually a final plat required to go along with development. So based on the analysis of the proposed project against their policies outlined in the fringe area agreement, staff does recommend approval of the application. We did recommend approval of that based on the fringe area agreement to the Planning Commission. The preliminary plat does conform with the city's rural design standards as outlined in the fringe area agreement. So at the January 16th meeting, this Planning Commission did uphold staff's recommendation and recommending approval of the subdivision case for approximately 32.96 acres. Be happy to answer questions. I know that's a little bit confusing.
The approval's contingent on county approval of the rezoning.
I think you're good. Thank you. Would anyone like to address this?
I'll just really briefly add that in addition to meeting the rural design standards, the applicant actually is intending to go ahead and put curb and gutter in. They're trying to make this a desirable, even though it's a small subdivision, do it to a high level, you know, a high standard to try to draw businesses into that area. Again, it's a high visibility corner, so he wants to set the table. They want to set the table up for a good development down the road in the future, too, and get off to the right foot. Thank you.
Thanks. Counsel discussion. Is every, is it anyone not inclined to support the P&amp;Z? Okay, all right. Roll call, please.
Ceelee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Yes.
Item number 11C, 12 East Court Street, Level 2 Design Review Height Bonus Request. Resolution approving height bonuses for 12 East Court Street and the Riverfront Crossings South Downtown Zone. Motion to approve resolution.
So moved.
Moved by ma'am, seconded by Ceelee.
Bruce, I'd like to insert, I'm not sure if this is exactly the right time, but I would be interested in deferring a decision on this tonight.
I'd be interested in entertaining that after we have the presentation.
Okay, all right.
If that's okay with you.
That's fine.
Okay. And maybe even some discussion, but.
All right, Danielle, please.
So this is an application for Level 2 Design Review, which is conducted by yourselves. This includes a seven-story bonus height request for two 15-story buildings located at 12 East Court Street, the current location of the Penicheck Gardens Apartments. That's the area shown on the screen here, bounded in the yellow dash line. My presentation tonight's going to be broken into a couple components. I'm going to leave largely the discussion of the project to the applicant. They're here tonight with kind of an animated flyover perspective and their own presentation to give you tonight. So I'm going to focus more on the background of this project, the city's process that goes into it, kind of some high-level project description, then talk about the review criteria that were used by the Form Based Code Committee and the Planning Commission to review it before it came to you. Then, as we usually do, show you the next steps and how this lays out and that, and with recommendations. As far as process goes, this property has, is located in an area that had a master planning process performed for it specifically in 2013. That master plan, the downtown and riverfront crossings master plan, was implemented through a code that was adopted in June of 2014, the adoption of the Form Based Code. As you know, this was then rezoned to a Form Based Code district, the South District, Riverfront Crossings District, in September of 2018. A Level 1 Design Review is essentially concluded by staff. That's the Form Based Code Committee reviewing height requests up to two additional stories. Since the applicant is requesting more than those two stories, it becomes a Level 2 Design Review, and that's where it's at this evening for your consideration. There is, would also need to be a way for the applicant to dedicate right-of-way, provide construction drawings, and some other things typically done at final plat before a building permit could be issued for, for construction. As I said, this is a bonus height request exceeding a Level 1 review, kicking it into Level 2. The applicant has requested seven stories of bonus height for a total of 15 stories in a mixed-use building. The base max height for this district is eight stories, and that seven stories is allowable up to the total max bonus height of 15 stories. The applicant has requested to obtain the bonus height through three different means: transfer of right-of-way heights, transfer of historic preservation height credits, and through the student housing bonus provisions. This table shows a little bit about how each of those floors is allocated to those, the way those bonuses work. The first two are based on square footages, and the last one is based just on floors. So it's a little bit, some of the bonuses cover multiple floors, and I think that's why we tried to show here in the west building and the east building, which floors are covered by what kind of bonus transfer. It's also worth noting that the two, first two transfer types, the ones based on dedicating right-of-way and preserving historical structures, would have to come to City Council for Level 2 Design Review regardless of the number of stories that were involved. Those are two public goods that were designed in the bonus height process to always come to City Council, so would have come to for that. There is a conditional zoning agreement attached to that rezoning that requires a few other things to be met. I'll walk through those zoning conditions as part of this presentation. The Form Based Code Committee has determined the project meets the standards for the Form Based Code, and I'll walk through a little bit of our ongoing concerns with some design elements of the project. Did want to show you this. This was from a presentation more than a year ago that I made, kind of about the development process in general for Level 1 and Level 2 Design Reviews. On the left-hand side is the normal land development process, and then the arrows show when a project would get kicked from that process over either to Form Based Code, staff level review, or if it was for a Level 2 Design Review, how that would work. In this case, 12 East Court had another level of conditions placed on it. At the time, the rezoning was approved in a conditional zoning agreement, so it's even a little bit more different than other ones. But we've been shepherding it through this process, and we're here tonight kind of as that final step to fulfill a lot of those conditions that were placed as part of the conditional zoning agreement. Speaking of the conditional zoning agreement, there were several things that we've been continuing to monitor through the rezoning process, primarily dedication of the Capitol Street right-of-way back to create a public street where that right-of-way had previously been vacated and turned into a private development. As I said, the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council's involvement in the review, some elements to do with streetscape improvements, making sure the project satisfies the required affordable housing requirements, a specific condition regarding an analysis of the building footprints in the master plan, some specifics about landscaped interior courtyards, and then some other wording that's kind of more general in nature about the design excellence of the project. So that brings me to the part of the presentation where I'll talk just very generally about the project. Like I said, I'm going to leave a lot of this to the applicant at the next stage to kind of talk about. This is an overall site plan showing the site, shown in, with Burlington Street aligned on the top of the screen, to the north, to the south is Court Street. Right through the center of the project is that rededicated right-of-way for Capitol Street. And then to the east would be the Voxman Building, and to the west would be the gas station, and the newly-built building that faces Madison. The building has, is shown here kind of in the beige or yellow color, I guess, on the screen up here, as the footprints of the building, kind of the three I's and a backward-facing C, I guess. Those are the west building to the west of Capitol, the east building to the east of Capitol. They show up this way at the ground floor because there's a courtyard shown in blue that kind of cuts through the lower third, three floors of the building, creating an open transit way through the building. This also shows the improvement of Capitol Street with. This also shows the improvement of Capitol Street with angle parking, which I'll talk about a little bit later in the presentation. Also shows some of the kind of high-level landscaping elements to go along those streets in green. Color-coded in blue are the courtyards that kind of, as I say, cut through the building or nested into the building along the public-facing Capitol Street, and then lighter green are two of the courtyards, or sorry, three of the courtyards that are more for private open space for the residents of the building. Talking about the building, we break it out into West Building and East Building. Just to kind of summarize, the West Building, the number of dwelling units there is just under 500 in the current program of the building. That requires three levels of underground parking to support the required parking requirements. There is also some non-residential uses along Capitol Street and Court Street and Burlington Street. This is just the West Building footprint, again, a little bit closer up, showing color coding of those uses along the ground floor. On this screen, it looks to me like kind of a, well, it's hard to see, but the blue is residential. There's kind of some orangish-yellowish areas that are either office or retail space, and then there's some amenity spaces for the building as well. There's some ground floor academic spaces facing Capitol Street on the east side of the building that are programmed for computer labs and Wi-Fi surfaces. And the majority of the recreational amenities for the two buildings are located in this building, including a half-basketball court, track, and jacuzzi area, and an outdoor pool deck. Again, here's that site plan showing the open space. I'll walk you through a little bit, the open space. They do meet all of their open space requirements and exceed them, in fact, for the requirements of the Form Based Code. Like I said, I'll let the applicant walk through some of the images that they've locked up of their design and explain those design elements to you. Moving across the street to the East Building, slightly fewer units in this building, 426 in the current program. Again, underground parking to support that. Again, non-residential uses primarily along the Capitol and Court Streets with some on Burlington. This is that floor plan shown for the East Building. There are academic spaces as well in the East Building, but the recreational uses are primarily located across the street in the West Building. There is a restaurant shown on the floor plan for the 15th floor. Again, color coding those areas, kind of in blue, the residential, the greenish color, the amenity spaces, the orange, the office, and the yellow, the retail. Again, like I said, the open spaces shown in blue and green here exceeding the requirements of the code. We did look at project materials as part of this submittal. Actually, there's a materials board up here if anybody wants to see the materials firsthand up close. We can pull that up a little bit later if you need to. Along the first floor of the Capitol Street, the applicant has proposed an artistic component in the form of a graphic panel behind metal screens near building entrances. This rendering shows the metal screen with plantings growing up them and the lighted graphic panels behind the screens. They've also proposed a skywalk connecting the East and West Buildings at the fourth floor spanning over top of Capitol Street, and they've shown a design for the improvements to the right-of-way of Capitol Street in the form of on-street angled parking, head-in parking with travel lanes for vehicles of 12 and 1/2 feet, additional space for those angled parking, and then pedestrian walkways of 12 and 1/2 feet. As far as the review criteria, I'll go through quickly the review criteria that are used in general for all Form Based Code projects, and then talk about the specifics for the bonus heights that are requested for the additional stories in this project, and then walk through the remaining conditional zoning agreement terms at the end. These are the standards that are required for all bonus height provisions, are very general in nature, basically demonstrating excellence in building and site design, good quality durable building materials, and that the project is generally designed in a manner to contribute to the character of the neighborhood. Bonus height's not intended to be by right, so this is a subjective review process, and since it's a Level 2 Design Review, it's before you tonight for that review. Staff does look to the goals expressed in the master plan when we perform our reviews. So talking about the specific bonus heights that are requested, the first one I'm going to go through is public right-of-way transfer. This is basically if they were to dedicate back Capitol Street as a public street, they're giving up development potential by doing that, and the bonus height is intended to offset and incentivize that kind of dedication. Not every project in the Form Based Code is eligible for this kind of bonus height because the city doesn't want streets just anywhere. We have a network of streets that we've looked at as part of the master plan and have identified key areas where we would like to require additional right-of-way, and this site does contain such an area. So they are eligible for this transfer, and it would basically open up Capitol Street back to a view to the north of the Capitol itself, open it back up for vehicle and pedestrian circulation in the same grid street network that's already established in downtown. Through the dedication of right-of-way, just over 300,000 square foot of development potential could be gained. Staff does have some concerns about the design of the improvements of the right-of-way once it's dedicated, specifically the angled parking and the width of the travel lanes. We don't think that's consistent with the development of other streets in the near downtown. We would, had actually, we've suggested to the applicant or directed the applicant to convert that to parallel parking so that it's more similar. Also, it'll allow for more of that square footage to be used for pedestrian use rather than vehicle travel. Do anticipate this to be a highly-travelled corridor, especially with this level of development and the fact that it's so close to campus. It's really ideal for pedestrians to be using those sidewalks. Additionally, there's a skywalk proposed, as I said, connecting the building east to west across Capitol Street. We feel that would block the view that opening the street has created, so it's counterproductive to the dedication of that street back to the public use. Could also divert activity, pedestrian activity away from the street level if people are using those skywalks rather than engaging with the stores and the activity on the street The second bonus height transfer is for historic preservation. This allows, again, development potential that's foregone by an applicant preserving a property rather than redeveloping it to take that potential and invest it elsewhere. The Tate Arms has already been designated as an Iowa City Historic Landmark previously, and there's some remaining potential transfer of square footage that would be eligible to send to the site. So that's just over 27,000 square feet. Finally, the last bonus height has to do with student housing. There's some prerequisite conditions that need to be met, not just any property in Riverfront Crossings is appropriate for student housing. The bonus is designed to encourage it close to campus, in fact, within 1,000 walking, 1,000 feet walking distance from the campus. This property does qualify for that prerequisite. There's some other elements of designing appropriate student housing that are included in the bonus provisions. They include an enforcement plan for onsite management and security. If you're going to have more than 200 bedrooms, which this project proposes, there's also professional onsite management required as part of that bonus. There's a direction to provide usable shared open space with amenities that create high-quality living environment for students. There's a provision about improved bicycle parking above and beyond the typical code standards we have for bicycle parking. Also, it would be subject to rental permit and inspections. This does meet the, I said, the relocation criteria, and they've demonstrated compliance with a number of those elements, including the onsite bicycle parking. There are some improvements we would still recommend to the fencing for the bicycle parking as part of our design review. We do feel that there's more detail needed in regards to the security plan. Staff does recommend that final administrative review and approval of the management plan occur before a building permit could be issued. The applicant has made a good faith effort to provide a plan. We think there's still some review and comment that could happen at the staff level to fulfill this condition fully. Also, staff felt that the plan lacked detail in how the student amenity spaces would create a high-quality living environment. Staff was really looking to the applicant to provide a justification for the space that they've programmed. We would still be looking at them to provide that information. And then finally, staff, the applicant has proposed fully-screened balconies. Staff doesn't support the balconies for a project of this density. We have experience with open balconies causing nuisances, both with objects being thrown off of or escaping from balconies, and the nuisance that additional noise outside can create for residents of the projects. The applicant has actually, has proposed to address some of those nuisances by screening the balconies behind some of the materials you've seen on the board. Staff just still does not support that approach. And finally, to kind of address the remaining zoning conditions that were part of the CZA, the applicant can talk you through their proposal. One of the requirements was conformance with building footprints, specifically shown in the Downtown and Riverfront Crossings master plan. The applicant did provide an illustration of their building footprint in comparison to the master plan. It can walk you through the differences. There's not objectively a large difference, but the design elements are kind of up to your discretion. This is a recap of what that master plan showed for page 61. The area of the development is this area here, these four buildings shown on the master plan here. Staff will just note that the rest of the neighborhood is not developed in complete conformance with the master plan. The exact layout has already been altered by redevelopment in that vicinity, which was appropriate and just does not quite conform with the exact footprint of those buildings. So that's an analysis we would like you to conduct this evening to see if you're comfortable with the applicant's explanation of how they've met that standard. One of the other rezoning conditions was for landscape interior courtyard. The plans do show an interior courtyard in several places, most specifically for this condition extending from the Capitol Street to the alley between the East Building and the Voxman Music Building. And finally, the requirement in general terms to demonstrate excellence in design, we've walked you through a little bit of the materials that they propose, being durable and high, high-quality, including metal panel, terracotta, spandrel, and regular glass, metal screens, and concretes, concrete. There are also extensive window and door openings on all sides of the building. Entrances to the non-residential uses are along Burlington Court and Capitol and are at grade, really helping to create a more walkable environment where people can come off of the street straight into those spaces rather than feeling that they're disconnected from them. They've met the setback requirements at the fifth story and, in fact, have provided deeper setbacks on Court Street than are required. It's located between the Voxman Music Building, talking a little bit about character of the neighborhood, and a newer eight-story residential project to the south in Johnson County Courthouse to the south. As I'm sure the applicant will explain, the site also does have some significant slope on it to ameliorate the effect of that height. As far as the next steps, here we are at Level 2 Design Review. Based on the relevant criteria, staff on the Form Based Code Committee does find that the proposal meets the standards of the Riverfront Crossing Form Based Code. Staff recommended approval with conditions and modifications shown on the screen here. I just want to highlight a couple. The first one is removal of the skywalk. Again, we felt this blocked an important southern view of the Capitol. It could potentially divert pedestrian activity away from the street level. It would not really provide a public benefit for having taken away from the environment in that manner. As far as Capitol Street, we feel like to better match the master plan and the downtown street network, the emphasis on sidewalk widths should be reexamined rather than parking in travel lanes. The CZA does give the city final design approval. And then finally, balconies are staff concern, again, with the open-air balconies creating a nuisance. Staff also wish to clarify that some comments have been made about University of Iowa's support of the project in relation specifically to skywalks. The conversations that had been held with the university were quite some time a while ago. The university has expressed to us that they don't generally support the east-west skywalk over the reopened Capitol Street. They talked kind of in general conceptual terms about an elevated walkway over Highway 1 or Burlington Street to support safe student travel across that street, but that's not really what's being proposed at this project at this time. So that was staff recommendation. This did go to Planning Commission as part of that CZA condition. The Planning Commission looked at staff's recommendations and disagreed with two of them, so it comes to you tonight, having, not including the removal of the skywalk and not including removal of the balconies. So the Planning and Zoning Commission at their January 16th meeting voted 5 to 2 to recommend this to you tonight with these two items removed, and I think I'd be happy to answer your questions at this point if you have them. Otherwise, as I said, the applicant will give their presentation, kind of go through the design of the building, and I believe Councilmember Thomas had some slides to present.
All right. Any questions for Danielle?
I just have a quick question as I was going back through this. The commission recommendation shows five points. The staff recommendation shows eight, and you've mentioned two that they removed. And so I'm not asking you on the fly, but that's just something we need to, I guess, confirm exactly what they didn't recommend that staff did.
So my understanding is what's showing on the screen, one through seven, was presented to the Planning Commission. They struck out number one and number three. Number eight is one that our city attorney's office actually asked us to add in as clarification. I didn't draw attention to it because it really is just a restatement of what we felt was already included in the proposal, but we've had some questions on other projects who wanted to be more explicit.
Okay, thank you.
Danielle, I just want to ask you, I've really been careful listening to you about the height bonus and everything, but my understanding is we talked about this last time when we talked about affordable housing, B2A, and I guess my understanding that the developer agreed to fee-in lieu. Is that still there? I don't see anything talking about this. Is it something should come later or it should be here?
Affordable housing agreement would be required of them prior to the issuance of a building permit, and they have the options of choosing how they fulfill that.
Yes, that is up to them, I know, but I know that they, you know, they agreed to that last time. Hopefully, they are remaining the same, but is that supposed to be here?
No, that doesn't come to council as part of design review.
Okay. I was just like, where is it?
You can ask the developer when they get up and present if that's still their intention. It's my understanding that it is their intention to pay fee-in lieu, but there is nothing binding about that in this.
Sure, yeah, yeah. I guess when I know, like, sometimes when it should be there or not, yeah. Thank you, Danielle.
As far as the, the street widths, so for Clinton, I'm sorry, for Capitol Street, so north and south, is it comparison or?
So the total right-of-way they're dedicating is 100 feet in width, and then they have to design the elements that go in the streets, public sidewalks, travel lanes, medians, whatever else might be out there. So my summary included the current proposal, which is 12 and 1/2-foot travel lanes, additional parking for vehicles on the street in the form of angled parking, which takes up more of a footprint than a parallel spot would. A parallel spot would only be a little bit more than the width of a car once it's parked. Angle parking is the whole length of car at an angle plus some backing up and maneuvering spaces, and how much of the vehicle overhangs the sidewalk on the front. So generally, a parallel parking style would take up less street space for cars and allow more space potentially to be allocated towards sidewalks.
I know you're saying that the two items that you cross them out is not being approved by the Planning and Zoning.
Planning and Zoning Commission forwarded the recommendation to you. They recommend, so they would recommend not having any additional constraints on skywalks or balconies.
But the staff has not recommended.
The staff still have, our initial recommendation would still be what we would recommend to you.
And how that work?
Well, let me, let me just jump in and just let you know kind of some more background on our thoughts. We're taking our cues from planning studies that we've done in the recent, in the recent years, particularly with the downtown. You've seen what we did with Washington Street, where we've considerably widened the sidewalks there and moved to parallel parking on both sides. That's kind of the model that we would suggest with, with Capitol Street. To us, the parallel, I'm sorry, the angled parking goes about just everything that we've been talking about with council for the past many, many years. We've had lots of discussions on arterial streets, on downtown streets, and everything has been prioritizing pedestrians and the bicyclists. We feel the parallel parking is better for cycling, although these are not, this is not a designated cycling corridor. You could probably expect a fair amount of cyclist on this corridor. And when we're talking 1,700 beds here, that's a lot of pedestrians spilling out onto the side. sidewalks, primarily moving to the campus area. And then when we think about long-term and the development potential in Riverfront Crossings, we talked about that a little bit at your work session, and we try to quantify the development potential that's still there in Riverfront Crossings and look at the ground that the university holds, particularly the surface parking lots that the university holds. You can expect a lot of pedestrians that are south of this property that will want to move to the campus area. And in conversations with the university, we've really characterized this area, although it may be hard to picture now, as a future Anne Cleary walkway, so that type of extension. Obviously, we opted not to push for a closed pedestrian street, but we do feel that the pedestrians, I strongly feel that the pedestrians need to be accommodated at the highest level here, and we don't think that can be done with what the applicant has proposed. We think that can be done through limited parking of a parallel nature and maximizing
Any more questions for Danielle? Thank you. And there's someone here from the developer.
Yeah, I do not, just going to say a couple things, but yes.
There we go. Okay, Rob. Should be able to just hit play over there.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Haven't seen you guys for a long time. My name's Rob Decker. I'm the project manager for this project, also the owner's representative for the project. I think most of you are familiar with that at this point. We have our architect here tonight as well from Newman Munson, who will be speaking a little bit after I do, and then I actually have a little bit of follow-up after that, if you don't mind. I'd like to, we're going to start with a video that the architect did. It's brief, it's 90 seconds. I'm going to then proceed through the same proposal I did for planning and zoning, pretty much unchanged. I wanted to make sure that we do pretty much the same thing for you that we did for them. You can watch the video again at the end if you choose to. If you want to see it again, we'd be happy to play it, and then we'll be here for Q&amp;A So one of the things I want to do to start, and I hope you'll forgive me, is reading a pre-written statement. I don't like to do that on a personal level, but the project is large and has a lot of complexity to it. So I want to, I want to do that. I'll follow up briefly with a little bit of process stuff, reiteration, a little bit of what Danielle touched on. I want to get into the site. We'll have the architect speak to the building itself, and then I'll address the three items that staff doesn't support, and then, as I mentioned, we'll be here for your Q&amp;A. So on behalf of our ownership group and design team, I'd like to thank all of you for the opportunity to talk about this project. I don't want to stand up here for an incredibly long time, but along with Newman Munson, we'll give you a little bit of a rundown of what you're seeing and what our design entails. It's an incredibly large project, and while many of us on the team have the benefit of this being second nature to us, after these many months, we understand that this is an incredible amount to digest. We're incredibly excited to be on this potential project. It's a really unique opportunity to transform a pretty dated section of downtown or near downtown into something that's really a game changer for Iowa City in our opinion. Very few, if any, private properties prevent such a unique opportunity as to be essentially on campus, provide private residential housing of incredibly high quality that allows for a student experience based on a proximity to campus, walkability, incredible amenities, urban design and more. Not only is the project that you're seeing something that would change the landscape of Iowa City for the better in our opinion, it brings an incredible host of benefits, including an estimated $3 to $4 million annually into city coffers, an estimated nearly $9 million into the Affordable Housing Fund, a reopening of the long-closed Capitol Street axial entry point to the old Capitol, which finishes off the last block view of that, and incredibly high-quality safe housing for students essentially on campus just south of downtown. The project makes sense. It fits the site. The height is partially offset by the steep grade of the hill it sits on so that it's less or equally tall to most of the other high-rises in town, including the ones directly adjacent to it. It replaces outdated infrastructure and puts a newer building and a new energy code in place in an area of town that benefits tremendously from it. The impermeable area of the site is nearly the same as what currently exists, but with a much higher urban density, density that's called for in the City of Iowa City master plan for this area as well as other student housing studies completed in town. This will be one of the most walkable living facilities for students in town. Our analysis of current market rates and other analyses released recently, I assume you probably have seen, assume less than a 3% downtown vacancy and around 6% in the metro area, which is an incredibly healthy level. In discussions with our colleagues in the industry and from other accounts supplied by Housing and Urban Development, arguments are often made of healthy levels of vacancy sitting around 8 to 10%. Iowa City within the last decade or so has experienced incredibly low vacancy rates, below one. Those levels are not sustainable, and that's why a number of housing projects are popping up in front of you, as I'm sure you're evidently aware. The analysis that developers are looking at are still showing excellent opportunities in town, and that is the reason for those projects. Lastly, besides making sense for the reasons above, it's been incredibly well-received. We've received positive reinforcement and outright support from affordable housing groups, the local unions, the Downtown Association, countless local contractors and businesses, and numerous members of the general public that I've personally spoken with. Best of all, the project is being completed locally. The owners are lifetime residents of Iowa City, the architects from Iowa City, I'm from Iowa City, the engineering companies from Iowa City, and our general contractors from Iowa City. I will challenge you to find a project that's this large, $200 to $250 million that will be completed completely by Iowa City firms. It's just unbelievable, in my opinion, how incredibly rare and unique that is. Lastly, the project is estimated to push 2 million-plus labor hours into the local economy and labor hours from local firms. To get here, we've been through nine months of rezoning, nine months of design review effort with city staff. They've been great to work with. I said the same thing to P&amp;Z. I'll repeat it again. Just because we have some of these disagreements doesn't mean they have not been great to work with. I know them all well, they know me well, probably better than they want to. We've been through our P&amp;Z meeting, we're here tonight, which is the last step, we're getting close to the last step. It was two years ago this month that we started this project, so we're two years down the road right now, which is pretty incredible. And I'm not saying that in a bad way, just incredible how fast the time goes. Hitting on the CZA really quick, dedicating the Capitol Street right-of-way, part of the CZA, pretty much a no-brainer. We obtained approval for exterior elevations from P&amp;Z. We are going to build Capitol Street right-of-way to city specifications. I'll get into a little bit more of that at the end. Really, the only thing we take umbrage with is the parking orientation. I don't want people to get kind of bogged down on the rest of the details. We really couldn't care less what the road widths are. Those are what is in the design, but we really don't care what we're working with engineering. We'll make sure all of those things meet the requirements. It's really about the angle of the parking, and I'll get into that later. Streetscape improvements are pretty substantial. I have a statement from our licensed landscape architect on that in a minute. I am going to bore you with one more pre-written statement. Satisfaction of affordable housing, I wrote, I authored a formal memorandum to city council that we will pay the fee in lieu of. That's still a little bit up in the air as to what that final design will be, but it's somewhere on the order of $9 million. We intend to stick by that. That's why we wrote it in a formal memorandum to the city. Compliance with the footprint in the master plan, Danielle touched on that. We'll have a little bit more from that on Newman Munson in a minute. Interior courtyards, again, have a little bit more on that in just a sec. Approval of the architect obviously was checked off, and demonstrating excellence in design, which is what Nathan's going to get into in just a minute. My last thing here, and I'll shut up and let him talk. In a, I should have opened this up a minute ago, sorry. In terms of the general overview of the site. So what do I do to get that on the other one?
That's mine. Okay, sorry.
It's all right. We kind of said it might be funky to put the two screens.
Yeah, I don't know. We can put it over there, but I hate to do that to you.
So now if you drag that, you grab that, drag that, there we go. Thank you. So just running through the site really quick, just so you sort of have an orientation as we talk about it. This was our initial sort of layout that we wanted to do for the streetscape, pretty similar to what you see now, which is right here. This is just the landscaping plan. The one difference that we were hoping to do, and really, the only reason I wanted to bring this up is we were hoping to emulate Iowa Avenue up here on the west and east sides of the old Capitol with a landscaped median down the center of Capitol Street and pedestrian refuges at the north and south ends with kind of a pinched section in the middle. We still have some of that, but from the get-go, our goal has been, you know, this hasn't changed a ton. This is the current iteration. As I said, the width of these lanes is not really a concern to us. The width of these sidewalks can be altered. Really, for us, it's about the angled parking, and I'll get into that at the end, but on the site, you have entrances into the underground parking down in the alley, down here in the southwest corner to the west series of buildings. And over here, and I know it's kind of hard to see, but through this, through the alley that comes up by Vauxhall, there's another entrance into the underground parking for this side of the facility right here. So there's two underground entries to these, to this point. The landscaping up here is kind of a linear feature that emulates Vauxhall to the east and the Wellness Center, which is down to the west. And then up here, sorry, down here on Court Street, the landscaping emulates what is, it's not so much on the west, but what is up on the east block of Court Street. So these are blending in with the neighborhood on the north and south ends, and then there's a lot of public works and city input on this already in terms of the planter spacing, tree spacing, all of that. Most of that is, all of this landscape architect plan was part of the design review. You'll hear us talk about four courts, that's these front areas, the four entry points to the building, and then courtyards, which is what we call sort of the private ones in back. There's three, there's not a fourth one up here because of Vauxhall pinching that alley down. And then this is sort of the central courtyard, or what I would call the concourse, through up and down to the middle of the site, which is a huge landscaped courtyard through the central portion of the site. It's got a really large setback, and Nathan will get into that, but it's got a 160-foot separation down here. It's really, we listened early on from very early days, going back those two years to what I referenced earlier. The site is really laid back and a lot less cavernous than the master plan shows, and we're really pleased with that. A statement from our landscape architect to kind of touch on what you're seeing up here, because I know it's hard to digest. "An important piece of this project has been the carefully planned landscape features intended to create a beautiful space for pedestrians, motorists, and users of the building. Plants and paving materials and other site features were selected to complement existing nearby streetscapes to provide a seamless transition along Burlington and Court Street. Capitol Street will be aligned with trees framing views of the old Capitol building to the north. Overstory trees will shade proposed parking and complement the surrounding buildings. The resulting tree canopy is intended to create a comfortable pedestrian experience along with the large beds of ornamental grasses paralleling the generous walkway connecting adjacent spaces. Throughout the site, unique planting beds reflect the architectural details of the building, as will the proposed colored concrete accents. Public entrances with seating will be enhanced with the use of ornamental trees, flowering shrubs, and a mix of perennials integrated into the surrounding streetscape with perennial beds that wrap around the building. All of our features are designed to integrate more green infrastructure into the urban environment. A courtyard space between the buildings will be flanked with vegetation and ornamental trees to create a strong axis while softening the hardscape. The addition of varied seating types, accent lighting, and the possibility of public or private art spaces will create an inviting environment around the building." With that, I'm going to let Nathan talk a little bit before I come back up just briefly, and then we'll be finished up. If you want it.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Nathan Griffith. I am an architect at Newman Munson Architects, and I am the project architect for 12 East Court. I wanted to start by, you know, talking about three critical goals to the project that led to a lot of the decisions that were made, first being the health and safety and welfare of the residents who will live in this facility. Their experience really drove a lot of the decisions and the critical pieces that we'll talk about tonight, and two of those are the balconies as well as the skywalk. You know, we want to create a place for those folks to thrive as well, and so those are critical. I'll touch on those in a little bit. Secondly, very critical or important for the owner and the design team to create a project that contributes to the quality and the character of the neighborhood. And so as I'll talk through some of the form of the building and the materials of the building, all contribute to that point. And then thirdly, an enhanced pedestrian environment. We spent a lot of time working on the lower levels of the building and how the building touches the ground to make sure that it's a quality development that rises above those around it and really does create that enhanced pedestrian environment. So to start off, here's a diagram here with the master plan footprint on the left and the proposed footprint on the right, and I wanted to point out some differences. Largely, we spent quite a while to conform to the footprint of the master plan, and we believe we do. In addition, there are several things that are different, which are improvements on the master plan, and I want to point those out. A couple of them here, in the green, the four court areas, as you walk down Capitol Street, we felt that it was important to give relief to the pedestrian in those four courts as well as the sort of courtyards, so you don't, on the left in the master plan, there's these sort of U buildings with this hard edge building that would really create a sort of cavernous experience as you walk through. Moving up through the building on the right in the dashed lines is the outline of the tower, and again, there, trying to work the massing to break it up and make, you know, the building reach to the sky and sort of these spin reach to the sky, and sort of these spindly fingers, rather than, on the left, if those were to extend up 15 stories, those would be very chunky and massive. And then thirdly, the additional setback to the south of the site, on the image on the right of the 12 East Court project, there's quite a lot of setback. We pulled the towers intentionally further apart to allow for more access to sun, kind of to the street for the pedestrian. And so here are a few images that were in your packet, and I wanted to briefly walk through them, experiential images of the project. So top left, you're standing on Burlington, and looking back to the Vauxman School of Music, and you can start to see 12 East Court kind of peek up above the School of Music. A lot of the materials that we have on the project come directly from or sort of mirror the School of Music, glossy and matte terracotta, that are high-quality commercial materials. They start to sort of reflect the sky in a certain way. At the top of the building, you'll see there's more glass there that allows the building to start to dissipate as it moves up towards the sky. On the right side, top right there, Burlington Street and UI Recreation Building, standing right in front of the UI Recreation Building, looking back east towards the development, you can see the tower elements with the very deep recesses. We were very intentional not to create a building that was blocky, but rather was broken up and extended towards the sky as these sort of fingers. Bottom-left image, you're standing in front of the courthouse on Clinton Street. One of the things to look for in all of these images really is the way the balconies start to break up the building and soften the corners. And so you can see there, on either sides, as the tower goes up on either outside corner or balconies to the units. And then the bottom right is kind of moving closer towards the development. You know, we've got this sort of grounded, slightly darker material with all sort of non-residential spaces on the meeting of the street. Plants, a lot of different plants to soften the building, as well as screening elements to give layered effect, all things that we're using to make a better pedestrian experience. A few images as you walk through the development. On the top left there, Rob had mentioned a lot of the plant work, and really making an attempt to make it feel like a green and lively place, softening the building at the ground, and so where the building meets the ground, being intentional about where plants are, as well as the color of the plants and things. On the top right is an image of the central courtyard, looking back towards the east, with on either side opportunities for kind of graphic panels, as well as on the bottom of soffits there, moving away from the image. On the bottom left is an image looking back at kind of the forecourts and how you enter the building, and you can really see the landscape elements and how they reflect the building. And then the bottom right is a image looking back west, which shows the two buildings and how they come together, so. One thing to note here, the connection between the two buildings is, looks very small in the image, but is actually very large. It's actually taller than this building. It would be taller than the parking garage across the street. It's 40 feet tall, so as tall as a four-story house, 48 feet wide, and 48 feet deep. So it's actually a very large space. So I wanted to touch specifics, touch on a few specifics of the skywalk area, as well as the balconies, and just kind of point out some obvious stuff. So the skywalk is located off of the fourth floor and connects the east-west building. It's not right on Burlington, it's actually stepped back from Burlington. The image on the right, you can see the Old Capitol there, and the bottom of the image in the distance, and the skywalk kind of shooting above it. So we were very intentional with the materials here to create something that was skeletal, and might start to dissipate in the sky and be transparent. You know, the skywalk is very critical to the success of the development, and then it provides a safe sort of patches between the two buildings. Without it, you know, tenants and folks will walk through or outside, and not have easy access to the amenities in the west buildings. So to take a moment to talk about the balconies here, to point out just a few of the details, the balconies are a 15-by-five-foot area, so fairly generous size. On the large, long face of the balcony is perforated metal, and you have a sample of the perforated metal on the board here. I wanted to put an image on the right of an actual project that was built of that perforated metal, and how you might experience, or how the experience will be, from the street and from within. On the top right is an image that shows you that what that perforated metal does to the development. It adds layering to the facade, it helps soften the corners. Move your eye to the top left of our development. Now imagine without those balconies, without that perforated metal. The building becomes much more clunky, and sort of less, more hard, and so we feel like that that design element alone does a lot for softening the building, making it approachable, pedestrian-friendly. On the bottom right here is the perforations from within the unit, again, allowing views from within the unit. You know, we feel like the balconies are critical to the success of the project, the health, safety, and welfare of the folks who are living there, access to, you know, we feel like there's a necessity to have access to fresh air, and just to be able to step out of your unit and get some sunlight, so. And then in addition, on the short side of the balconies is a metal mesh guardrail. It's a mostly transparent material, and again, we're, you know, we're being sensitive to the layering of the building and the way that it's transparent. You can see on the image on the right, a project in Austin, Texas, that uses the same material that we're proposing. So from the ground, it becomes very transparent, and 12 East Court will offer to the sort of layering and softness of the building, but then also provides for the health and safety, well for access to light as well, and fresh air. That's all I have for you.
So lastly, I'd like to address the three issues from staff. As Jeff mentioned, two of those, planning and zoning recommended keeping in the project. And actually, I would say, in regards to Capitol Street, and this is in my opinion, but from planning and zoning, I think they were generally supportive of the angled parking on Capitol Street, too. I counted four of them that expressed that they didn't particularly care which way the parking was, so. But regardless of that, the reason that each of these items is important to us, from the design team's perspective and from the owner's perspective, in regards to the Capitol Street parking, the reason that that is important to us is for the local businesses. The vast majority of the project doesn't have, and doesn't require anything to be at the ground level, other than residential. And we don't have a lot of things at the ground level, other than residential. There's a handful of things, there's about one in each. There's one up here, there's a little cafe, there's a rooftop restaurant, there's an office down here, and there's an office down here. And the vast majority of this stuff is student amenities at the ground level. And because of those few entities that are going to exist there outside of the students, particularly this rooftop restaurant, and I can tell you our office is right here, this is always full, this parking is always full. And the owner feels like 20 versus 40 stalls in here shouldn't make or break the project. The project is already incredibly underparked, and I don't say that in a negative way, I say it in a good way. It's got an incredibly low amount of stalls for it, for such a size, which is great, it's very walkable. But these 20 stalls, in the opinion of our team, can really benefit the few entities that are going to be in this facility. We feel like the street can still be designed in a way that does all the things the city wants it to do, we just have a differing opinion on that. The thing I would say in regards to Washington, and I like Washington Street, is that that is a downtown thoroughfare that is all businesses, and that is not what this is. And so, that's another reason why we feel like you could justify this being a different sort of a feel, while still getting all the same landscaping and everything else to it. In regards to the skywalk, safety and amenities are the two big reasons that's incredibly important to the team. 365 days a year, 24/7, having safe and secure access between the buildings, not having to go outside to traverse over to, whether it be a friends' unit, or if you are, if you live in the southeast corner and you want to travel up to where vast majority of the amenities are, and when I say the vast majority of the amenities, I'm talking about the pool, the workout area, the Wellness Center, all that stuff. All the student, sort of student-based stuff is spread throughout the facility. But in terms of all the other things, they're all up here. They're in the high-visibility spot on Burlington for good reason. And if you live over here and you want to travel to that, not only, there's two reasons we feel that's important. It's safer, it's safer to be able to travel over there on the skywalk, but it's also, it also kind of provides equality amongst all the people who are renting from this space, being able, any of them having the same access. But it's also more, it's more energy-efficient. The amount of traffic that will be traveling between these buildings, on foot traffic, all the doors opening and everything else, to get to those amenities will be tremendous. And we just feel like it's an important access to have, an important amenity to have, sorry. It's designed not to block the view. We originally had it up here, when we talked to the university, it was mentioned earlier, we talked to them about a walkway across Burlington going over to the Siemens Center, and then there would be a skywalk here. And we designed the building to accept a skywalk, the same way that Vauxman has one. It has the capability to accept one up here, with the thought being that traversing Burlington would be safer for them to cross, and we would do some kind of a public-private dual walkway here that would allow folks to traverse that. But hearing what the city said, and hearing the things that you did earlier, we backed it up, we raised it up, and we put it back in here because it, and we designed it to be kind of spidery and transparent, so that it doesn't block very much of the view shed. The amount of travel up here that would be blocked, where your view would be blocked, is pretty minimal, and we estimate that it'll be back here more towards the sheriff's office, or the jail, sorry. Lastly, in terms of the balconies, I think the balcony amenity goes without saying, I hope it does for some of you, but fresh air is more healthy and appealing, it's been proven in numerous studies. The units are more rentable and more appealing if they have balconies and outdoor spots. The enclosures were put in because we met with ICPD twice, and met with city staff multiple times on it as well, and we heard what they said. We wanted it to be more safe, but also provide, it can also provide architectural appeal, as Nathan described really well. I would say nearly all of the other mid-rise and high-rise buildings in town have them, and I feel like it's odd to single out this building to not be able to have them. Plenty of them have students in them, and so I think saying stu, because there's students in it, and I'm not saying city staff said that, they didn't, but if that were to be the answer, there's plenty of buildings that have students in them. So, I think it's a really important thing to not make the building functionally obsolete. We all know that this is geared towards students, that's been the intent since day one. However, the building will live 100, 100 more years, I'm sorry, 100 or 100-plus years, and we don't want it to become functionally obsolete. Should, should people come forward, if this thing is allowed to start, maybe the upper four floors get rented out to as sort of a higher end, I don't know. The project is so large, and we have so much stuff to do, that we need to figure those things out. Or maybe in 30 years, less student population lives in it, and more retirees come into it, or something to that effect. The important part of that is that the balconies cannot, you can't get them back. If we take them off the building, that's a decision that we're done with. So, we feel it's incredibly important towards the quality of the overall product. That's all I got.
Can you remind me again, which floor is the skywalk at?
It's on the fourth, right? Fourth?
The fourth.
Mm-hmm.
Rob, are there operable windows? I thought I heard that mentioned earlier, is that, is that correct?
There are, I mean, I would say yes, and there are, Nathan can probably speak to that better than me, but I think the intent would be yes. If you want to pull something up.
Yeah, the intent is access to fresh air, operable windows. Every bedroom would have operable windows, every living space would have operable windows.
Will there be a restriction on how wide they can open?
Yeah, code does restrict, give a minimum. We have, we're not to that level of detail.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions?
Would it be helpful to counsel if the architect walked you through the design board to tell you where those elements would be?
Yes, that would be, thank you, Jeff.
So, how am I going to do this?
You can come over here.
All right, so it's fairly simple for the size of development. We have the white glossy and matte terracotta on the top, the same material used on the School of Music. Darker terracotta, which is used on the base of the building as well, that gives a slight texture that is more pedestrian-friendly as you approach the building. Also, on the upper, kind of top of the building next to the terracotta is the corrugated white metal here to offset the building, give a little more shadow and help that dissipate into the sky, as I had talked about. These two materials down here are the balcony materials, so perforated metal on the long side of the balcony, and then the metal mesh on the short side. So fairly simple.
Thank you. So I know John had made mention of a deferral, but I wanted to at least maybe give people thoughts on how do we, how would you like to proceed from here?
Did you have, did somebody say you had slides to present?
I do have slides. I thought it would be part of when we would be commenting.
Okay.
But, yeah, I was, you know, I earlier asked if we could defer this two weeks, and I think the issues that I have are that, this was publicly announced last Thursday, and this is, without a doubt, the largest residential project ever proposed in Iowa City. And I do think, you know, there's a lot of material both presented to us as part of the project, and that in itself is a fair amount of material to try to digest, shall we say. But I also would like to at least give the public an opportunity to be exposed to this material now that we're having this, you know, this meeting, and have their opportunity to read the material and digest it as well. Especially, again, this is, this is a very large project, and with significant impact on Iowa City in many different ways. So I would, I would ask you to consider setting, deferring it for two weeks.
I would agree with John, because I think there's still a number of uncertainties about a development of this size, and I think for the benefit of the new council member, some of us that have been around have heard some of this material, but have heard even more new materials today. And as John said, the public needs to weigh in, and I know there's difference of opinion, which circles you run around in, who likes it and who doesn't like it, but I just would agree that we not vote on this resolution tonight, but take some time to give some thought to such a major decision on a project that the developer says is going to be around for 100 years. That's a long time.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to a deferral for two weeks. I would really like to make sure that we all, you know, do our reading and homework and stuff in the next two weeks, so that, so that we are prepared to move forward and not make this any kind of extensive deferral. But I would agree with two new council members who, you know, haven't seen and been involved in as much of the discussions. The only other comment that I would have to that is, I would though, like us to have a full discussion as much as we can tonight, to hear what questions or concerns that we each have. One, to give staff and the developer opportunity to come back and answer those in two weeks, and then, and then I would very much like not to extend it beyond that two-week period.
Also, I'm not opposing to that affair, but I think this project is a long time. A lot of people know about this project, it's not something new, even though it announced like two weeks, to be on the agenda, I understand, but Iowa City people was talking about this, whether they oppose it or they agree with it. it. They've been talking about this for a long time. And, but I'm not opposing to that affair.
The other thing too I would, would mention is, we do have this meeting coming up with the student government. This is being presented as a student-oriented development, the largest of its kind in the history of Iowa City. So it at least, again, provides an opportunity for the students to provide us with, with their thoughts on it.
So I think, well, I think we're going to continue with discussion if everybody's okay with that.
Yeah.
A council discussion. I think we may not have any public comment, if that's okay.
Yeah, I think that makes sense, just to get something on the table. I'll just start with the skywalk. I'm, I am comfortable with keeping the sidewalk. I'm assuming and hoping that the visuals that we were shown are an accurate reflection of what you see. But with it being on the fourth floor, and with the materials to kind of see through it, I felt comfortable that that's not really going to block the view of Old Capitol as you're walking to the north along Capitol Street. And I do think that that, I think it is an important feature in terms of safety and convenience, in terms of residents getting back and forth between the two buildings. So I'm comfortable with the sidewalk. And so I'll just leave that there, and maybe we can do kind of one topic at a time and get an idea where people are at.
I'm not so sure that I'm in favor of the sidewalk. In fact, I'm a little confused, because you kind of give some conflicting messages. You talk about the sidewalk and the students not having to go outside, but then when you're talking about your balconies, you're talking about fresh air being more appealing. So there's kind of two different messages there, that you want them to have fresh air, but yet you want them to be walking inside to this walkway. So I'm a little confused on that. I do want to say though, what I like about this project, I'll start with something positive here, maybe give you a little bit of good feelings, was I was, I was really pleased to see all the thought and planning that went into assuring that this development would be a safe and secure place for its residents. Because I appreciate and thank the UI student government folks, Austin over there, pay attention, with the surveys that they've done regarding student needs, wants, and concerns about student housing in the area. And the need for security was always high on, on the list, listed as a major concern. So I think that is a plus for the department, and I applaud you for that, and maybe go along with some of the city staff's concerns with that and guidelines, because that, that will be good. But in those surveys, I don't recall the students talking much about amenities like rooftop restaurants and study areas and gyms and swimming pools, or even luxury-type apartments. So I was a little concerned about that, as far as what type of student population you're, you're really aiming these for. But those are kind of my, my major concerns.
Well, Susan mentioned the, the sidewalk, which is, you know, I have some other comments that sort of step back a little bit from the project and look at it from, you know, the question, some of the questions Jim had raised in his letter of how is, how does this project respond to our carbon, you know, reducing carbon emissions in our climate action plan? But with, with respect to the sidewalk, I think that has a lot to do with the character of that block of Capitol that we're reopening. And it was interesting hearing the other, the comparison with Iowa Avenue. And I think that's an accurate description, actually. And what I feel we, we will have, to a certain extent with Capitol as it's being proposed, is a parking lot. Now, having a skyway over a parking lot, I don't find all that objectionable. However, if we are envisioning it, and Jeff mentioned Anne Clary Walkway, that is precisely the image I'm hoping we can begin to move this project toward. It's the same street. It's, Anne Clary Walkway is Capitol Street north of the Pinnacrest. We have the potential of creating and adding to what I view, or creating an extension of Anne Clary Walkway, which I think is one of the most beautiful streets or corridors in Iowa City, and extending that to the south. Now, would I want a skywalk over Anne Clary Walkway? I don't think so. I mean, if, if we try to capture that same quality that, that we have on Anne Clary Walkway and extend it to include the, this project, which is about a four-block-long length, we would have a dramatic north-south pedestrian corridor to complement our dramatic east-west corridor of the pedestrian mall leading down through the new engineering building with that breezeway, which is similar to what's proposed in this project, to down to the new art museum and main library. So two really wonderful pedestrian-oriented corridors, one east-west, one north-south. And in that vision, I don't see a place for the skywalk.
So one of the things about this project, I think it, when we're looking at student housing and this being kind of in the heart, from a private sector where students can be and make it walkable, that, that's positive. I do worry about the vacancy rates. It was mentioned that there's 3% downtown currently, and then there's 6%, 6% in the metro area. We have a lot of projects, projects going on, and I know that the vacancy rates will be going up, not just because of this project, but, you know, there's other pending projects as well. I think we do have to keep that in mind. You know, people are concerned about vacancy rates. The other thing that I know we're gonna, you know, we got a $9 million commitment from the developers, you know, the Form-based Code for the Riverfront Crossing area, that was pre-me. And one of the things is, that's there is the, the 10% of affordable housing, I believe, is the percentage amount. And you can do a fee in lieu of, and I just want to make a statement, I'm in agreement with the $9 million, but I think that when we're talking about opportunity for individuals that don't have the financial means to be in a 12 East Court, to me, it doesn't seem right to be able to buy that person out of an affordable housing and, and have them not have the opportunity to be and experience what other students will experience. And so that doesn't seem equitable to me at all, that we would take the $9 million because it's more than money. It's, it's about the experience, when you can be exposed to someone else that come from a different, maybe financial background than you, that has had opportunities. And it, it makes a difference when someone can be around other people that is outside of where they've been. And so, you know, for me, you know, the affordable housing, it has nothing to do with the developers. It really is everything to do with the Form-based Code, which doesn't resonate with me, but I at least wanted to mention it. We'll take the $9 million, but it, that $9 million, it does not compare to the opportunities that someone that is a student, that can be in that building and, and experience something that would give them something that is unimaginable. So, you know, we're talking about balconies, we're talking about skywalks, we're talking about parallel parking. Tonight, I'm not going to too much focus in on that. I'm just taking it all in. But I'll come back with some comments at the next meeting.
I really, I'm not opposing to the sidewalk, as long as the view that I saw is like accurate, because I can see the capitals and can see everything. I think I just like the view, and even though this is a video, and I don't know how it's going to look like that or not, but this is, this is nice. Hopefully, everything that we saw here will be the same. I'm not by any means opposing to the sidewalk. I would like to thank you for keeping your commitment for the fee in lieu. I understand the concern, you know, Bruce have, and Austin is here, I know that we need affordable houses for students, but believe me, I want everywhere here where we have 10% on the rise where you get affordable. This apartment, or this is, this room, you know, it will be sold by room, I guess not sell, it'd be rented by room, and the room will be furnished. This is expensive for a student to live there. It was almost, I went and asked the 80%, because they're using the 80% of the area median income, and I said, how much is it? It was 800, almost. 800 per room, furnished. This is not going to be affordable for low-income students. But I, my understanding is, the $9 million will be spent in Riverfront Crossing, we're not far away, you know, and will be like more of what we can build or we can use it. I don't know how. As long as we have the money, a lot of ideas will come later, and we will have apartment that could be rent for students, could be rent for, yes, like regular low-income families, or anyone that will be affordable forever. That's why I was pushing the fee in lieu. But again, I want to thank you for keeping your commitment, and I'm not opposing to the sidewalk.
My question about the sidewalk, I think, is more of, less of the aesthetics and more of the diverting pedestrians off the street. So, I mean, as I understand staff's concern, and I would share that, that creating kind of a habit trail, you know, between the two buildings and isolating those students within the development doesn't seem like a good use of that public, open space when you're trying to promote the benefits of those public areas of the courtyard and the, kind of the open 40-foot-tall, you know, four-story-tall linkage between the buildings. So that's a little incongruous to me, but I do appreciate the comment about saving energy in terms of opening doors and that kind of thing. Is that something that would be quantifiable, do you think?
Yeah, I think you could do, I think you could do an energy analysis for, with a...
We're going to need you to go to the mic, I'm sorry about that, and reintroduce yourself.
I think, yeah, you could do a com-check analysis and focus it specific, which is one of the government's energy audit programs, or some other ones that we use too. But yeah, you could, you could, you could do an analysis of that. We do, I mean, we do that with other things. We do that with pools that have, you know, like Robert E. Lee has it, you know, open and close to the outside. You have to do those sorts of, you know, it's complicated, it's complex, but yeah, it can be done.
Because overall, with a building of this scale and longevity, I appreciate what you're saying, that it would be built to last 100 years, but it's disappointing to not have more of an emphasis on the sustainability or the environmental impact and minimizing that for this, the scope of the project. So I just, you know, to me, that was relevant in terms of the, the sidewalk. Are there other sidewalk comments? Sorry, we're trying to go categorically here.
I don't think so. I tried.
I guess one, one question I would have in relation to the sidewalk, is this something that you could add in the future?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. It's, it would be one of the, I mean, architects would, would understand it better than me, but we've, we've done that. Not we, but that's been done. There's one behind the, the new hotel that goes to the city parking ramp. It might have to be done a little bit differently, but if you know you're going to potentially do it, like they did at Vauxman, you can sort of create a structural landing pad for it that could be landed on later. Yes, you could add it later.
I don't have a comment on, on the sidewalk at this point, but on the parking issue, the, the development is directly catty-cornered to an existing large parking structure. And one of, one of the goals of council for some years now has been walkability, reducing the, reducing number of cars, reducing number of trips, and, and creating real walkable spaces. We've, it's, the Anne Clary Walkway's been referred to a couple of times. And I think that, at least from my personal perspective, it would provide a much cleaner, clearer Anne Clary-like walkway if we did not have, if it did not have all the parallel parking spaces, and I...
Angled, you mean?
The angled, I'm sorry, the angled parking spaces, because it seems to me that there is sufficient parking nearby, especially in the evenings with the, with the existing parking structure, that could easily compensate for that.
You want me to comment on that?
Sure.
I, I agree with you to an extent. I think Burlington becomes the critical issue there. And I know the city has looked at planning-ish efforts and projects that would deal with that. I know the university has concerns. Burlington's obviously a state highway, is considered a state highway as well. I think that's part of, it's a good point. I think if there was a sidewalk across Burlington, which is, I think, why we were looking at that early on, that that would be, and I think that's why they looked at that at Vauxman too, is because they realized that those ramps can provide an amenity to something south of Burlington, sort of the near downtown district, provided you feel like parking there and getting across Burlington pretty easily. I think if you don't have that, then it, I think it's going to function just differently until that happens. Not for everybody, but as, in a general sense. And I think that, that's what the, we've talked about this, and the owner firmly believes that, that, that is critical, that parking is critical to the success of those few businesses that they have in that. Whereas on Washington Street with a parallel parking, there's less parking, but you're less concerned about it because it is so walkable. But no, I think it's a good point. I think that's, but I think that's sort of the gist of it, in terms of the flow of traffic across that street, of pedestrian traffic, so.
To the businesses that will be in the building and the parking you just mentioned, I think I'm misunderstanding, or maybe you just switched what you said, but the, the parallel parking on Washington Street, that's a very walkable area with businesses.
Yep.
And the businesses don't seem to suffer from the fact that there's parallel parking there.
Correct.
So I, I don't, I don't think it makes sense that then having angled parking is necessary for the viability of the businesses.
Sure. Well, I think that this is not downtown. So you're not going to have the, I, I don't know, I can't speak for the owner. I mean, I can speak on, I'll speak to their thoughts as well as I can, but I think that they feel that this, since this is off of downtown a bit, and is going to be critical for the success of those businesses to be able to have drive-up customers.
So those businesses won't be oriented towards people who live in the building or within a walkable vicinity?
I think the cafe, you know, I have no idea what the plans for the restaurant are, the type of it. I would guess something similar to the view. I can tell you, that's not really oriented towards student traffic. We, we see it, our office is right there. That's, that pretty much is like a post-five o'clock crowd that kind of arise once the students leave.
Also not angled parking there, though, right?
Clinton, the Clinton Street, if you look at the master, I can't, that I should remember because we're right next to it, but there's not much parking, period, on Clinton. It actually is, I can speak to the master plan of Clinton Street on that block, and it is, it, the master plan shows angled parking on that block, directly adjacent. Because I was actually going to show the master plan of that, because there's a, I don't remember what cut it is, there's a GG or an HH cut right through that block, one block over from this, and it shows angled parking in the master plan with bike lanes. So, and that is, as Jeff mentioned earlier, Madison and Clinton are designated as the primary cycling route thoroughfares. This is not. So those are designed as the primary cycling route thoroughfares with angled parking on them. Clinton doesn't have it, but that's what the master plan shows.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
Thanks.
So... I'll have, I have a few more comments, and then I have a few slides. And I'll just, I have a longer discussion here, but perhaps, since we're deferring it, I'll, I'll just try to focus on the headings of some of my concerns. You know, as we've noted, this has been a two-year project, so since, since it began, we've enacted a climate action plan. So climate now has become, you know, an important piece of our deliberations in what we do. And I'm concerned with how, how does this project reduce carbon emissions, if at all, and its potential heat island effects, which are associated with, with climate, you know, climate, you know, the increase in CO2 in the atmosphere. So, so one of my concerns then would be, how do these tall buildings, and I'm, I'm kind of defining a tall building as anything over nine to 10 stories? You know, how do those tall buildings... You know, how do those tall buildings, especially if they take up the entire block, reduce the solar access of the adjacent buildings and the open spaces to sunlight, thus reducing the passive solar gain in natural light that would otherwise fall on those buildings in open spaces? And if you if you look at our downtown Riverfront Crossings master plan, which does show tall buildings, they are typically, they have a small typically have a small footprint. They do not extend the full block length as this proposal does. And that's that's not uncommon where cities pursue tall buildings. They they realize that the value of them, especially with residential buildings housing residents, that it's preferable in many ways to have tall buildings have smaller footprints so that they maintain views across the cityscape. You know, this building running the full block may be something around three hundred feet long, if I'm not mistaken. So, you have a building three hundred feet long, hundred and sixty feet high, forming a visual barrier running north-south, and there are two of them. So, that that's going to have a significant impact on the light quality on the Burlington Street, the really the reopened Capitol Street, the open spaces within the project itself. And in in certain respect, the the project itself will be having that impact on itself because it's two discrete buildings. So, the carbon the carbon aspects of this project, I think, because of its size, are a concern to me. I would also, and I think this was brought up in the presentation, how how adaptable will this building be over its lifetime to different forms of occupancy? This is even, I would argue, a privately-owned high-rise that's student-oriented, is itself a new building type to Iowa City. I mean, we have the rise. This this would be similar to the rise but larger in size, with it being two buildings. So, the question of its adaptability is uncertain. It's it's a new building type. We also have, as many people have noted, in in terms of the student housing market, we're facing considerable uncertainties, both in terms of the increased supply that's coming onboard, the the concern that at by the end of this decade, there'll be a significant drop in the student population, and also that the University of Iowa is still considering housing its second-year students. So, all of those things could have an impact on the demand for student housing in Iowa City. We certainly, I think, would want this project to be able to be resilient through those changes, which in my mind would suggest that it be flexible in terms of its occupancy and attract a non-student population as well. I'm not certain that it will, if that building type would appeal to a non-student population. And would a non-student be interested in cohabiting with a building that may be some percentage of students? That, too, is is not something that I'm familiar with. But lastly, I think I would just talk to the the idea of what I what I've liked to refer to as density done well and architecture where the city comes first. And I think that speaks to the what what in in terms of the criteria refer to the quality and character of the neighborhood that surrounds the project. And I would like to try to articulate that a little bit further by saying that, you know, building a great project, which is defined in this case by the buildings and the streets, require that the that each building along its length excel in its own right, is of an appropriate scale, respects the adjacent open spaces, buildings, residents, and businesses, and contributes to a safe, comfortable, and interesting pedestrian environment. So, in a sense, all the pieces of the project, the streets, the buildings, adapt to one another, forming a better and more coherent whole. So, one one thing I've always felt with this project, and it's been pretty consistent, I mean, I think you you definitely, given the direction you want to take this project, I think improved it. But in in essence, I think it has remained the same. And so, I've always given the fact that our comprehensive plan for Riverfront Crossings, it really called for a smaller building, significantly smaller building. What other options might have been considered? So, we have kind of a range of options from what was initially reflected in the comprehensive plan to the the project that you've been proposing. And I had hoped that we would have an opportunity to kind of explore that and see what seemed to be the best project with respect to that that definition that I was just describing. But that didn't happen. It didn't happen because the, you know, we had kind of a a temperature reading of the previous council in terms of what, you know, what would be the appropriate project, and the majority felt what was being presented was the way to go. So, the the opportunity to explore other options really wasn't taken advantage of. So, so that's what I've I did over the last couple of weeks. I I asked myself, what would I conceivably use as a model, much in the way Jeff described Anne Cleary Walkway as a model, for both the building and the the reopening of Capitol Street as part of the project? So, let's see if I can work this thing.
Danielle.
Oh, here we go. Okay, so, as I was saying, I was kind of trying to look for models of student housing that came closer to the vision as as described in the Downtown Riverfront Crossings master plan, that might give us suggestions as to how we might move forward on this project or some of the qualities and characteristics it might have. And so, this this first project is in Seattle, Washington. It's student housing for students at the university. Student residents have been reside in a really what's a student residence district west of the main campus. And this is a project representing, you know, two residence halls, Maple and Terry Halls. And it was done by the same architect, but as you can see, the buildings are different. So that along the streetscape quality, there's some differences in the architectural character. The the architects mapped this in terms of the the solar access issue, the the architects mapped the sunlight patterns on each facade and varied the window sizes accordingly. So, there was a little bit of a difference in the facades driven by the question of solar access. You can also see how some of the windows are operable, can be open. And then in terms of the space between them, you have a public plaza framed by the seven-story buildings that serve as a pedestrian corridor that extend the ground floor activity and into the into that outdoor public space. The second one is in Los Angeles. It's called USC Village. And in a similar way, a student residence campus, which is actually fifteen acres, so it's a much broader mixed-use project. But the buildings you see in the image are of the the student residential component of that project, and it too is framing a pedestrian corridor linking the town center of the mixed-use development to the USC campus and providing a linkage between the two. And all of that sort of reminded me is it was interesting that Jeff brought up Anne Cleary Walkway, because I think that's kind of our local expression of these same ideas that that I found in the Seattle project and the USC project. And I included this image because it it sort of shows the the extent of the Anne Cleary Walkway with the Pinnacle Crest at the at the bottom of the image. But it also shows the Papa John Business Center to the to the east of Anne Cleary along Jefferson and Clinton. And it has an interior courtyard that's open to the south, and it's bounded by the surrounding buildings, but the buildings are of a relatively low height, so it ensures that that interior courtyard has maximum sunlight. I haven't been in that space, but I understand it's a very, very beautiful and and well-used outdoor space. But here here, sort of like with the student residence, is kind of the image of Anne Cleary Walkway looking south toward Old Capitol. You can see it framed by the the trees. And again, the kind of the same sort of outdoor room that you saw with the previous images, framed by mid-rise buildings, again, roughly in the same height as called for in our comp plan, with the corridor running, the pedestrian corridor corridor running down through the center and then to the edges, spaces for lingering. You know, as we've been saying, there there are going to be, whatever the size of this project, easily over a thousand students living in it. I I could envision that full right-of-way being developed in a way which would favor the pedestrians as well as lingerers. You know, we have towns in Iowa that are the size of the population that could be in these buildings. So, having that open space that serves as the the center of the development as a primarily pedestrian-oriented space, I think, is is a wise way to go. And then as you move forward on that same space, the same qualities are maintained, you know, some new buildings, some old buildings, all of different architectural character, but they all reinforce the sense of that space being a beautiful outdoor room, always being reminded of the fact that it's this primary corridor within Iowa City being the axis with on Capitol Street leading leading toward Old Capitol and the Pinnacle Crest. And then this, once you pass through the the Anne Cleary Walkway, you see the Pinnacle Crest itself with McBride and Jessup framing the space. And and one concern I have is how this current view, which I think you can see kind of that sky view framing, serving as the back backdrop to Old Capitol, if the proposed project will in any way affect that view, I tried to do some rough calculations and it appeared to me that the the height, the top of the elevation of of the proposed buildings would be a little bit higher than the the dome. So, I'm I'm not, you know, sure how that will impact this view or other views looking south. But this, for me, is one of the iconic views of Old Capitol. One one unique thing about the Capitol right-of-way, unlike Iowa Avenue, is you can occupy it. You're running right down through the center of it and rather than being on the edges as you are on Iowa Avenue. So, it's not it's the side elevation, it's not the frontal elevation, but I think the view of it is still an important one in Iowa City, and I would hope that the project would not diminish it. This this view, I think, is more significant than the view looking north from the project area, partly because it's on the same elevation, the the ground elevation is similar. So, I would just end by saying that the the Cleary Walkway emerged over decades through a series of coordinated actions that have given us one of Iowa City's and the University of Iowa's most beautiful spaces, and that how can 12 East Court contribute to what is already a wonderful corridor? It's aligned on the same axis, could extend it, as Jeff was describing, further south, and be an extension of this truly remarkable kind of pedestrian-oriented north-south corridor that runs through Iowa City. So, those those were some of my thoughts. Again, I'm kind of trying to expand our our thinking about the potential of the project.
Danielle, can I ask you a question, please? When I'm looking at the the table number one that has the summary of the bonus height request and reading the text, my understanding is that any height transfer based on the public right-of-way has to be approved by council. Is that correct?
That's correct. It requires a level-two design review.
Okay. And also, then that's the same for the historic preservation?
Correct.
So, the student housing bonus that in this table shows to be fifth floor, number fifteen, is the only one that doesn't require, if it weren't the fifteenth floor, it would, am I right, that theoretically, this could have been done in a different order? Floor nine could have been student housing and?
If if the project had only added two additional floors total to its base max height, so if it only had been ten stories tall, it would not have required automatically level-two design review. This had a condition placed on it that it the planning commission wanted to see it back again, so.
Right.
Regardless disregarding that, that just two floors would not have required it, and student height bonus would not have required level-two design review automatically.
Okay, thank you. I I appreciate I appreciate all of your comments, John, and and the the context, you know, in terms of the the Anne Cleary Walkway and and those visuals. For me, I feel like, and we have a new council, but I feel like we did a year or more ago give the direction that we were, as as a whole, not every single person on council, but as a majority of the council, that we did give the direction to the developers that within certain constraints, we were looking favorably at the fifteen stories. And so, the contact, I mean, one of Maz, you were kind of the fourth vote, and part of that was the hundred percent fee in lieu of. And I realize we don't have the same full council here as we did at that time. But from that history and from those public discussions and from what we, and and obviously developers understand, they take risks, elections happen, et cetera, I certainly feel compelled to continue to give my support to the fifteen stories. For me, there are a lot of pieces that we still need to decide on that I guess I had hoped we could have a little bit more discussion on tonight in terms of, and maybe and maybe part of it is backing up from that, is the fifteen stories, are people even going to support that? But I think to wait until two weeks from now and try and walk through Skywalk balconies, angled versus parallel parking, I guess I would say if we're not going to get into a little bit more depth on some of those issues tonight of where people are coming from, we may have a really long meeting in two weeks, but I think everybody needs to come really prepared in two weeks in terms of their thoughts on those, because those are all issues that that we need to give direction to staff and the developer as to what we are going to agree to. So, from my perspective, I've told you how I feel about the Skywalk. I think with the height of the Skywalk, with the transparency of the Skywalk, I can live with the Skywalk. I wasn't really sure about that. I think I think from a from a climate action standpoint, I agree that that saves, I mean, when you look at the middle of the winter, and this has been a pretty mild winter, actually, so far, other than a couple of short spells, students aren't going to want to walk outside when it's twenty degrees below zero, or even if it's twenty degrees above zero, to go to the other tower, to go back to their room, to visit friends, to go to amenities. So, to me, that Skywalk makes a whole lot of sense. To me, it's not in conflict with the opening of windows, because there's days when it's really nice and in the spring or the fall, and you want to have your windows open and have fresh air. So, there's two totally different reasons to have windows that open and to have a Skywalk. And so, to me, those are not not conflicting issues. At this point, I am in agreement with staff on the parking. I know that sounds like that's a big issue for the developer and the owner, but I think the parallel parking gives us and narrowing up the travel lanes gives us more room for the sidewalks. And as people, many people have said, we are going to have lots and lots and lots of pedestrians in this area. And so, to have wider wa- And so to have wider walkways, and while it's not designated as a bike lane or bikeway, there's going to be bikes there. There are going to be bikes. And there's just so much more chance for accidents with people backing out of an angled parking spot than there is with parallel parking. And so at, at this point, unless I can be convinced otherwise, I'm definitely inclined to go with, with staff's recommendation on the parallel parking. I think there's some others here, but those are some of the key ones, and I just kind of wanted to.
Balconies?
Pardon? Oh, balconies, yes. I, I support the balconies. I think that, I think the screening, I like the materials, and I think to, to John, to your point also about flexibility of use in years down the road, I think everybody likes to have that ability to get outside from their living space. And do we, you know, do we run some risk in terms of noise and things like that? We do. But I, I agree, I like the idea of balconies. I like to be outdoors, and I think a lot of other people do. So I would also support the balconies.
I guess, I'll just quickly say on that, that like the modeling studies that I was looking at, you know, what is it, what's my reference here? You know, what I would, what I will be doing in the next two weeks is looking at student residences. I mean, that's what this project is being presented to us as. And, I mean, off the top of my head, I cannot think of many residence halls of this scale that have open balconies. I, you know, I may find them over the next two weeks, but when I think of the residence halls even on, you know, at, serving the University of Iowa, I cannot think of one, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, that has outdoor balconies. So it's, it's one of those, and I, at the same time, understand the need for them in a certain respect in terms of promoting the idea that the use of this building, you can almost be sure it may change over time, so it needs to be built for change. But you, you were running into a conflict there, in my opinion, in terms of how the project can be, you know, designed to serve what we clearly are pointing toward as a student-oriented facility that may over time change. That in itself is kind of a new, particularly of this building type, a new scenario.
I really want to propose that, since we're going to defer this, and some people, they don't want to do their comment, even like Bruce said, he's going to continue on those later. And also, I think, I understand, you know, right, also, you're going to say the same thing. So let us go ahead and defer it, and please, everybody have to make up their mind for next meeting. So we have a lot of information here, and we have a lot of time to digest this information so we can come ready next time.
I, I just have a couple more questions, as someone who wasn't exposed to, to a lot of this, if I could. First, staff, Danielle, I think you said that staff was opposed to the balconies with the development of this density. Is that, is that kind of a correct, so a, a smaller development or a less dense development, the balconies might be okay? Is that?
Yeah. The concern was really about the intensity of the use, the density of the number of units on one site vertically with that type of feature.
So would, this is really kind of putting you on the spot, but if it had fewer balconies in a similarly dense.
I'm not sure if I could tell you where the threshold would be.
Right.
So talking about the bonus height that they're talking about, more than eight stories, anything in that range, I think we, we would have the same concern.
Okay.
We, we can provide you or ask the applicant to provide you the number of units that have a balcony and the number, number of units that, that don't. They may, they may know that right now, because it's not, you don't, not every unit has a balcony on this, in this project, so we could provide that to you if that would be helpful.
That was kind of tied to my next question, which is with the floor plans that I see in here, it does look like only the larger units have the balconies, so there's a number of, like, the one-bedroom, two-bedroom inefficiencies, looks like those don't. Is that correct? I mean, just as a generalization.
You know, for the most part, it's the three bedrooms that have the balconies. I believe there are some two bedrooms have balconies, but without consulting the plans, I don't want to.
Sure. I understand. But then procedurally, I think the CZA requires any substantial design changes would have to come back before council. So with the balconies as one element, and then the comment, Rob, that you made about maybe the top floors, to the flexibility of the development, maybe the top floors would be something different than what's proposed. I mean, it does look like the floor plans that are in our packet are same thing all the way up after the fourth floor, except for the restaurant on top of the one tower. So I think with those changes about the flexibility of the development and some kind of other housing model on top floors, I don't know, is that the kind of thing that would have to come back before us?
Probably, hard to say now, but probably.
It's always a question of judgment, how substantial the changes.
Okay. So that's part of just my thought processes, you know, that, that density of totally student-oriented housing and the fact that for the number of stories, which fundamentally what this question in front of us is the, the height, to have them be identical all the way up seems like the least flexible use. And, you know, for a mixed use, we're talking about the commercial on the bottom floor, I'm very concerned about that being vacant or not being oriented towards users in the area. And so I think anything we can do to, anything the developer can, can do to show that it is a model that is intended to be flexible and have multiple uses, because we know that the student housing landscape has changed significantly even since the council approved the rezoning of this.
Anyone else?
I might just offer, just in listening to your conversations, some, some information that maybe we can present at the next meeting, assuming that you defer, that, that could be helpful. On the skywalk, I think Rob in his presentation said, you know, the skywalk starts to block the view of the Capitol around the courthouse, maybe around the jail, I'm sorry, around the jail. We could get that precise location at which that becomes a conflict that might be of interest to you. Obviously, when you're almost under the skywalk, it's not going to block the, the view there, so we can work to get that from them. We could try to, again, work with the architects to determine some comparable 10- to 15-story student-oriented buildings, be it residence halls or private, that, that have dense, that have, kind of of similar scale, that have balconies, and see if we can show you any comparable examples there. And then on the roadway, maybe a couple of cross-sections to just show you, you know, as Rob said, I don't think they're too hung up on lane width, so if we take the parallel parking versus the, the angled parking and showed you a couple of different cross-sections on, you know, the, the extra width that gets added to the sidewalks in those scenarios, maybe that would help you. I don't want to present you something that wouldn't be helpful, but if those, if those three items would be, we can work with the development team to pull that together.
Yeah.
Sure.
So.
All right. So someone, so we're going to have a, a motion to defer? Would someone like to give that?
I put a motion to defer 12 East Court, level-two design review, height bonus request for the next meeting, which is on 6/18 of.
18th.
February, yeah.
Second.
Saleem, move and seconded by Mems. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion passes 7-0. Item number 12.
Mayor, can we get a motion for correspondence?
Oh.
Yeah, if they want to comment, let, I mean, I would just as soon hear if that might help us in our decision in two weeks, or, I mean, if it's brief, does anybody object? Or can we, or can we, since we've already defended the item, so we can't? No, we can't.
Yeah, go ahead.
But will we be able to respond to their comments?
No.
Probably not.
Let's do this first. We have a motion to accept, can I get a motion to accept correspondence?
Wolf, second.
Moved by Saleem, seconded by Weiner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries 7-0. So are people wanting to have, I mean, if we open it up to the public, then we're probably going to open it up to the public and have several people maybe address this topic? Is that what we want to do?
I guess people were waiting. Okay, then.
All right. We're going to open it up to the public and ask that you keep your comments between three
Good evening. My name's Rob McComas with McComas La Cina Construction. We've been chosen as part of the local team of 12 EC, as the GC specifically. We're a local contractor. We have about 130 employees, not to mention all of the local contractors that we work with in and around the area. One of the big reasons that we were chosen is because of our experience in the downtown area, and specifically with the city, staff from building department, engineering, all the folks. We're very familiar with that area. We've done the rec center for the University of Iowa. We've done the structure on the School of Music right next to it. We've done Hilton Garden Inn. We've done Midwest One Bank, just south of the existing post office. And then we start working our way through downtown, specifically with the project directly behind you as well, Chauncey, and numerous hundreds of projects in and around the downtown area. So we're just here to kind of give our support to the project and let you know the economic impact that it will do for not only our 130 local employees live in the area, 20 minutes from the area, tops, that are here, and the hordes of other subcontractors in and around the area that will be a part of this process as well if it goes forward. So again, just here to give our support for that, and with that, I'll pass it on to my business partner, Scott Wiley.
Thank you, Rob.
You, Bob.
I'm Scott Wiley, and I represent McComas La Cina Construction. And not only tonight do I represent McComas La Cina, but I represent all the subcontractors, the suppliers, the labor organizations, and everybody in this community about what an economic impact this project will have. It's enormous, and I'm just going to take a couple items just to hit, just to, so you realize the impact that this will have. Based on my review of the project, the average number of employees, the 12 EC project site each and every day will have is 187 employees. What an impact. A project brings 187 people every single day to this project. That's an average. There's 50 some, some days, there's 300 people. And those 300 people make an, an economic impact on the entire downtown of Iowa City. And we're thinking about not doing the project. Another, another, and I know Rob brought it up, but we are talking about a total number of labor hours, close to 2 million labor hours. The impact that can have on the people and our employees, I get to keep these people employed. This is important to me. This project is important to me. And to discuss parallel parking or not, or if we're going to cancel this project, is to me unbelievable. I just have to say that when I listen to everybody, and we're talking about people's lives, their working lives, their daily job, and I hope you realize that, what we're, what we're dealing with here. Jobs for 187 people every day. And I guess the commitment that we see the clerks making on trying to keep this as local as they can, the architects, general contractor, engineering firms, general contractor, they want to keep this local. So not only is it those people that work there every day, it's going to infect other companies and other people. Again, I just wanted to let everybody know, we're talking about a lot of different things, but the, the economic impact is tremendous, and I just wanted to add that. I'll make it short, and I'll end with that. But thank you, council and mayor, for letting me speak. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Bill Gerhard. I'm president of Iowa State Building and Construction Trades Council. I've been here many times. You're probably aware, the Building Trades Council is umbrella organization for the 16 craft unions that perform construction work. I can tell you, this is a big, bold project, and we're complete support of it. As mentioned, 2 million labor hours, that's a big impact. That's a, on a multi-year project. This means a lot of people getting a lot of good wages, getting health, health insurance and pensions taken care of. This would be a big impact for the, for the working class here in, in Iowa City. Two, environmental-wise, I, I've emphasized this before when I talk, if people want to live downtown, we need to go up. We just heard someone talk earlier about the decrease in pollinators. Well, wait till we don't have, wait till there's a decrease in farmland, because we've allowed urban sprawl to go out there, if you think that's not going to have an impact on food, food supplies. Third, the safety part of this whole thing, you know, we talk about skywalks, you know, that's obviously safer. I've had some, someone mentioned a concern about safety on the construction site. We have a general contractor here that does quality work and has a good safety record. Most of his subcontractors will be union subcontractors who have gone through, their workers have gone through apprenticeship and journeyman upgrade and have a lot of safety training, so I, I'm convinced this would be a, this would be a, a great job when it comes safety-wise. And two, we talk about affordable housing. One way to get affordable housing is to have a surplus, and then that'll drive prices down. So we talk about, we're worried about there being too many houses, but then, or too many places, and then we're worried about there's no affordable housing. And then we talk about, there was a concern brought up about maybe carbon, you know, is just sustainable. I have a son who's a sophomore and lives in catlet dormitory. He doesn't need a car. Next year, he's thinking about moving off campus. He's going to want a car. Think of all these people that'll be living within walking distance of campus. Cars are going to be the exception instead of the, the norm. So I think that's a, that's a good thing, too. So anyway, the building trades are in complete support of this. This has been going on for two years. We need to really roll along on this to get it going. So thank you for your time.
Hi.
Hello.
My name's Royce Peterson. I'm a local carpenter with Carpenters Local 1260. I'm just going to make one point, because they've touched on pretty much everything, but the one point I wanted to make is, in the past, we've had out-of-town developers come in and make promises and deluged buildings that in turn created bad jobs and unsafe conditions and no living wages for a lot of the workers. What I really like about this project is since day one, we've been in conversation with the consultant, the general contractor, and I feel really comfortable that this is going to give a lot of people good jobs that have living wages, and it's going to be local people that will turn and spend money sevenfold in our community. So that's all I want to touch on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello there. Austin Wu, UISG City Liaison. We've been keeping abreast of this for quite some time now, but generally speaking, UISG welcomes additional housing in the downtown area in order to improve walkability, maximize efficiency in land use, and lower housing costs. In the most addition, the most recent edition of the UISG Renters' Guide, UI students spent somewhere in between 30% to 50% of their income on housing, on average. Given parental assistance for some students, this is more like, most likely an underestimate, indicating that the majority of students at the University of Iowa experience some sort of cost burden state regarding housing. However, I'm concerned for this development, that the addition of certain amenities besides study areas and courtyards could unnecessarily increase the cost of housing for these buildings. The basketball court, track, jacuzzi, restaurants, and outdoor pool deck seem especially superfluous, given the proximity to metro trails downtown and the campus recreation and wellness center less than a block away. I also wonder about the energy efficiency of floor-to-ceiling windows seen throughout the, throughout the development. I urge city staff and council to take a very active and close look at the future planning, construction, and operation of this development. Developer of this property has had a history of misconduct for upkeep. development. I urge city staff and council to take a very active and close look at the future planning, construction, and operation of this development. Developer of this property has had a history of misconduct for upkeep of their properties and a widespread perception of general disregard for the primarily student tenants. The developer of this property has also had little experience with the development of this size. There's a lot to like about, about the proposals recently presented, but there's also much cause for reticence as well. So I liked it also, the suggestion for bringing this up in the upcoming joint meeting next week, if it's all right to share plans with them and add it to the agenda item as well. Would all of you approve?
I don't know that we'll be able to talk about the project.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right. I was referring to in the meeting, if we're there in the meeting.
I think he's just talking about putting it in on your joint meeting.
Just something to talk about, you know, especially given the intended purpose for housing students.
Okay.
Sure.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Hello again. Fee fixed by my rise. First of all, I want to say thank you for the H agency. I didn't catch that, and then I was texted later. So thank you very much. I should have said that in the very beginning. Just with regards to the affordable housing, I really commend you for talking about the $9 million in lieu, fee in lieu, talking about the riverfront crossings. My understanding is that the affordable housing there is 10 years, and so it lowers the rent only for 10 years. So sometimes I try and imagine myself, you know, sticking around for longer than 10 years, and then on year 10, being told that my rent is doubled. So I just think that there's, you know, creative ways. The city is really in the only position to kind of ask for some accountability on that in terms of develop, in terms of developers. And there's been a lot of creative solutions around, and so I'm, you know, I'm sure that staff and council can really consider those options. And yeah, so I really appreciate you thinking about the affordable housing. You know, it's not even just that it wouldn't be in this spot, but you're talking about, again, putting it off to the side. Riverfront crossings is amazing. I mean, you know, I love going down there as much as anybody. It's also not near, as close to downtown. So there's some of that integration that could happen in close proximity to the University of Iowa. Whether or not it's student-intended, it's also obviously closer to downtown. So it's a spatial sort of relocation, but then it's also just the sheer number and amount. So thank you for considering that, and I appreciate the conversation.
Anyone else want to address this topic? Seeing there is none, we're going to move on to item number 12. Mercer Aquatic Center Pool LED Lighting. Resolution approved in Project Manual and Estimate of Cost for the Construction of the Mercer Aquatic Center Pool LED Lighting Project. Establishing Amount of Bid Security to Accompany Each Bid. Directing City Clerk to Post Notices to Bidders. And Fixing Time and Place for Receipt of Bids. I'm going to open the public comment, open the public hearing. Hello, Julie.
Hi, Julie Seidel Johnson, Parks and Recreation Director. This is so easy compared to your last item. The lights are dim over the indoor swimming pool. We need new lights. The lights that we are proposing to replace with are more energy efficient. It's a great project that really needs to be done sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Any questions for Julie before she runs away?
Thank you, Julie.
All right, thank you. All right.
Anybody else?
Public discussion. Anyone like to address this topic? I'm going to close the public hearing.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moved by ma'am, seconded by Thomas.
Taylor.
No, Taylor. Counsel discussion. Roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Fergus?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 13, fiscal year 20, waterway wastewater clarifier repairs. Resolution approved in Project Manual and Estimate of Cost for the Construction of the fiscal year 20 wastewater clarifier repairs project. Establishing Amount of Bid Security to Accompany Each Bid. Directing City Clerk to Post Notices to Bidders. And Fixing Time and Place for Receipt of Bids. Open in public hearing. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Close public hearing.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moved by ma'am, seconded by Thomas. Counsel discussion. Roll call, please.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Fergus?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 14, sidewalk cafe policy. Resolution adopting a policy for use of public right-of-way and city plaza for sidewalk cafes and rescinding resolution 16-328. Move to resolution. Could I get a proposal?
So moved.
Moved by ma'am, seconded by Sully.
Second.
Staff, anyone from the, anyone like to address this? Yes, great.
Scott Sovers, Assistant City Engineer. I think the changes are outlined in your Council Action Report that was in the, in the packet, but in summary, with the recent reconstructions that we've done on Washington Street and the Ped Mall, there's needs for, need for some changes to the, to the policy. I'll just walk through a few of those, the kind of the most important ones to make it short here. But fencing is no longer required to be anchored to the new servicing, both on Washington Street and in the Ped Mall. The cafes in the, and the Ped Mall may butt a planter as long as there's six feet walkway on the opposing side. So in essence, you couldn't put a cafe from planter to planter. I think the idea there is to make sure that there's accessibility to the businesses along the, along the corridor. The cafes on Washington Street must be detached from the building and provide an eight-foot walkway up against the building. The alcohol and beverage division provides a little more clarity on what they require for cafes that sell alcohol, in terms of being contiguous. Having an overhead canopy is no longer required. And I think that's about it. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I just had a question about the anchoring.
Sure.
I mean, I can understand, we've got the new pavement, and you don't want them drilling holes and anchoring. But it's a very windy city. Are you encouraging then some kind of weight system, sandbags or something to, to provide anchor?
Sure. So there's a number of cafes along the Washington Street corridor that are not anchored right now, and it hasn't seemed to be a problem. I think they've done a pretty good job of using materials that are a little bit heavier weight, and so they haven't had any issues with them moving around. And I think, you know, part of the reason why is we're requiring that is, you know, with our new pavement, the anchors, you know, over time that are in the concrete just get filled with sand, and they get corroded, and they can't use them. So they end up drilling new ones. So we get a bunch of these little anchors out there. So we're trying to prevent that from happening.
Scott, what is the current minimum distance that's, we're going to eight feet from building face to where the cafe would begin?
Correct.
Now it's, is it now six feet?
Yeah, it's reduced down to six feet.
I mean, that's, I'm really supportive of that, because there seem to be some pinch points. I think there's one near the Engler, as I recall.
Right.
Just a little bit east of the Engler, where, where the walkway seems a little narrow.
Okay.
So they'll be eight feet clear now.
Eight feet clear on Washington Street, but then in the, in the city plaza or the pedestrian mall, it'd be six foot.
Right, yeah. But on Washington, I've noticed there's some spots where it seems tight.
But that's not a change. That's, that's, it's been eight foot.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Yeah.
It actually can be up to 10 feet in some locations, because I think we have a sandwich board sign zone, too.
That's right.
So if you have a sandwich board out there, it's supposed to be 10 feet total. But yeah, the one that feels like a pinch point at the chop house, that's eight feet.
That's eight feet.
Any other questions? All right.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else like to address this topic? All right. Counsel discussion. If not, roll call, please.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Fergus?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 15, Hickory Hill Trail Traffic Calming. Resolution authorizing the installation of speed bumps on Hickory Trail between First Avenue and Tamarack Trail. Motion to, could I get a motion to approve resolution?
Move.
Second.
Moved by Sully, seconded by Mims. And hello, we have a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Kent Ralston, Transportation Planner. I'll try and keep this brief. I know you've had a long night. As the mayor mentioned, the resolution before you authorizes the installation of speed bumps on Hickory Trail between First Avenue and Tamarack Trail. The residents of Hickory Trail have successfully completed the Iowa City Traffic Calming Program. The street qualified for the program based on traffic speeds. Staff discussed the proposal with residents at a neighborhood meeting on November 14th, and then a follow-up survey, a follow-up mailback survey of a budding residence showed a 83% response rate to the mailback survey, and then a 79% approval of the, the traffic calming. Just by way of background, the city's traffic calming program has, it's a five-step process, and participation in the program is entirely neighborhood-initiated and is something that the city does not impose on the neighborhood. The first step is petitioning for traffic calming. Once we get a valid petition, we then go out and actually collect the speed and volume data, which we did, and Hickory Trail qualified for. The third step is a neighborhood meeting, which I mentioned we held back in November, and we had a good attendance. And basically, the idea behind the neighborhood meeting is to try and gain a consensus on how to move forward. Then the fourth step is the neighborhood survey, which I mentioned. Again, it had an 83% response rate and a 79% approval rate. And then the fifth and final step is review and discussion by this body. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I don't have any questions, but I just had a number of comments from people who don't live on Hickory Trail, but live on one of the adjoining streets.
Right, yes.
That are not happy.
Yes.
And are frustrated that they don't have any input, because it's their only way in and out of their neighborhood. And they don't have any. I realize our policy at this point doesn't allow for that, but it's something I think that we might need to think about in the future. I realize it's not the speeds in front of their houses, so maybe it's justified that they don't, but there are a number of people who are not happy with this.
Yeah, there's, that's a pretty common response. There is, I think, three, I think there were three pieces of correspondence in the packet, and then a couple that came very late that I think were maybe sat before you. Yeah, that's a common thing. The idea behind that, of course, is that if we expand that to residents who don't live on the affected area, they may want to continue speeding and therefore kind of, you know, rig the system a little bit. We do post sort of real estate-type signs in the right-of-way, however, and they've been up for about a month. So we posted four signs, two on either direction of the street at two different locations, that give the time and location of the meeting, and then, of course, our email and phone number, so they can actually provide that comment. And that's meant for the larger neighborhood.
Okay, thanks.
I did speak to someone from the neighborhood, and one of their concerns was coming off First Avenue, onto Hickory Trail, there's a speed bump right there. And then, I guess, from Hickory Trail, no, Tamarack, when they make the, the turn onto Hickory Trail, there's also a speed bump.
Right.
What they're saying is, it's, it seems a little too soon
Okay.
for a speed bump, especially when traffic is turning right away.
Sure.
They're not going as fast.
We've got some standards we follow. We've got some guidance that we follow, and the city engineer will, will stamp this. So we'll be sure to follow all the applicable standards.
Okay, okay.
Good comment, though.
So you, Kent, you looked at traffic circles? I was reading in the report.
So we, as part of the process, before we have the neighborhood meeting, because we want to build consensus there, we actually meet with the streets department, the city engineer, police, fire, and then the planners. And we talk about all the different viable options. We talked about traffic circles, but I think the engineering group thought it'd be very difficult to actually fit them in. And the other issue is, these are all T-intersections. So there's four essential, the streets that essentially head to the north off, off of Hickory Trail, and they're T-intersections. And the other thing about traffic circles, we've talked about with some other developments in the past, is that you don't get any deflection on the through street, because the traffic circle sort of sits out there. The curb line doesn't change, so it doesn't slow folks down as much as we'd like it to. We did also look at bulb-outs at the intersection, sort of building the curb out a little bit to pinch traffic down and slow it down. Two things with that, one is there's not, the volumes on Hickory Trail actually aren't that high. So our experience is that unless you have pretty high volumes and you're actually meeting another vehicle at those pinch points, is you just scoot over, you know, if there's not an opposing vehicle, you just scoot to the middle, and you can still travel at the same speed you've been traveling at. The other issue with bulb-outs was drainage. The engineering group thought it would be hard to maintain proper drainage. Speed bumps, we know, work. They're probably the cheapest, best option we have available.
Good.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I think you're good. All right, any other discussion? Yes, would you like to address this topic? Please come.
Might be quicker to write my name than stick a thing on. There we go. So my name's Newt Cutter, so I'm from Tamarack Trail, so I'm one of those people on the off-streets. So to begin with, I'd like to thank the city in particular, Sarah, I think it's Wals or Waltz, I don't know whether it's, for responding to my email inquiries. I'm here to speak against the installation of the traffic calming measures, I believe they'll be passed, on Hickory Trail. My primary reason for the objection is, I don't believe the project's in the best interest in regard to the use of the ratepayer dollars. I think this money could be better spent elsewhere. My short history. The traffic studies conducted on Tamarack and Hickory were initiated in response to the recently approved Hickory Ridge development at the top of Tamarack. At the time, the motivation for these traffic studies was to obtain baseline traffic flow information prior to the development that could be referred to after the development was completed. The residents of Hickory Trail didn't initiate the traffic study in response to concerns of traffic speed. It was in response to the proposed development. I argue that the unstated underlying primary motivation for the installation of these speed bumps is not to reduce traffic speed as such, but to deter primarily the use of Hickory Trail as a throughway for residents of the yet-to-be-developed Hickory Ridge. With this motivation in mind, I do not believe this project constitutes a good use of ratepayer money. By the city's own assessment, the level of speed on this road is only just, only just reaches the minimum designated specifications for this program, so it's not wildly over. Furthermore, the city also informed us at the community meeting, the average reduction in speed after introducing the speed bumps is likely to only be in the vicinity of 1 to 2 miles per hour. I have a separate concern, which sort of speaks to the side residents, that I'd like the council to consider for future studies. I'd like it to be noted that this neighborhood is completely dependent on this one access road, as already been noted. It's not a through road, and this should make a difference to the way council assesses such situations. In this particular case, we're looking at a road that's a half-mile long, that has 50 residences. 18 of those residences, more than one-third of the residences on Hickory Trail, are within the first 200 feet of that roadway, and do not ever need to cross any of the proposed speed bumps, and never will, unless they're going to visit someone further down in, in there, to access their properties. They don't need to cross any. It seems unreasonable that the process affords these residences such a great say, while the other 70 residences dependent on this road, who will need to defer to these bumps, have very little say other than as forums as such like this. Nearly done. I've been told that council's likely not to be too sympathetic. The arguments are personal inconvenience. However, I estimate that at 25 miles per hour, I spend 30 hours on that road, just Hickory Trail, traveling to and from home. If these traffic deterrent devices for the new development are approved, installed, and if my speed, our speeds were reduced to 20 miles per hour, so let's assume they're effective, that would incur an additional seven hours of time on that road per year for everyone driving down Hickory Trail, as well as 10,000 speed-hump crossings. So that'd be true for everyone along Tamarack and the new development. Conclusion, I'd like to reiterate that I believe this request has little to do with speed, a lot to do with introducing city-funded barriers to deter people from using this street as a thoroughfare, particularly the new residents of Tamarack Ridge. I'd fully support another traffic study upon completion of Hickory Ridge, and I'd request that you consider more pressing needs around the city to fund. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name
My name, I'm gonna write here real fast. My name is Jason Napoli, and I am a resident on Hickory Trail. I was one of the residents that voted overwhelmingly in favor of this initiative. I can say, as a father of two school-aged children, this is nothing less than a health and safety issue. I was not actually aware of the component that included the, the opposition to the Tamarack, Tamarack Trail extension. So I can say, as a parent living directly on this road, it is strictly a health and safety issue for our children. So I hope you will be able to support this initiative in line with the way many neighbors voted. I would also like to have publicly thanked and commend the transportation planners, Sarah Walls, I believe it was Emily Bothell, who was on, who were at the meeting. They were unfortunately personally insulted at the meeting, which I thought there was no space for that. So I just want to commend their efforts and thank them for everything that they've done to have this be a fair and honest system. Thank you.
Anyone else like to address this topic? Council discussion?
I really gonna be supportive of this because I, I believe those people, they came here before, they talk about it, and, you know, I think so, this is affecting only, you know, mostly the people who are live there, and for their children, and we have enough people who come out and said they want this, and our city planner said this is key, where they can do it, this is the key option that they can do. I will be supportive of moving this forward.
I will as well. I mean, we, we have certain standards that have to be met in order to put any of these traffic calming methods in place, and so, you know, the data shows that it meets those. So I, to me, I feel obligated to support it.
I also support it. I, I'd just like to comment that I think the numbers, the response, and the ones who indicated support were like the most amazing numbers we've ever heard about with a survey. Eighty-three percent responding and 79% of those in support of it, that, that's pretty impressive, but I would expect that from the group that came with a very good presentation to us and spoke for the need for this.
My other question is, how does this number of speed calming devices affect entry for emergency vehicles?
Yeah, that's a good question. It no doubt does to some degree, but the fire chief is part of our internal committee, and we specifically asked him that question, and he, he didn't have any major concerns.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm gonna be supporting it as well. In fact, I was, I'm a little bit surprised that it qualified because it's, there is no through traffic. It's all local traffic. I always sort of tend to think that we have these higher speeds when you have a mix of through as well as local traffic, and in this case, it's all local. So I think it's kind of unfortunate in that way. You would think people who live in the neighborhood would appreciate the impact, and that's really unfortunate how that meeting went. I'm not a huge fan of speed humps, I would prefer it be done in some other way, but I get it, they are effective and relatively inexpensive, so it seems like it's the best we can do.
Roll call, please.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Calee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 16, assessment schedule. Resolution adopting an assessment schedule of unpaid mowing, cleanup of property, snow removal, sidewalk repair, and stop box repair charges, and directing this clerk to certify the same to the Jones County Treasurer for collection in the same manner as property taxes. Can I get a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Thomas, seconded by Weiner. Anyone like to address this topic? Yes.
Hi, my name's Zemore, I live at 213 West Benton Street. This summer, while I was at work one day, Representative of the City came out and told my wife that the area between my garage and the neighbor's garage needed to be mowed, which I understand, and then I did. I'm the renter, by the way, my landlord bailed on me earlier. If this fine goes through, he is planning on trying to level me with the fine. So I'm kind of an awesome spot. And so, all I was given was a green piece of paper, and the employee of the city just said, "Take care of that." I took care of that, I received nothing else from the city, and then came back and found that a contractor had come out, and they had cut down desirable plants in the established garden beds, and that's what we're being billed for today. And I just, I don't have the money to pay this fine. I don't think it's fair, like, I did what was asked of me. I admit that, yes, I did let that area get out of control, and I should have been on it sooner. But I just, I can't afford this. And I just, if you guys could waive it, or reduce it, or just something, I, I don't know. He said, "I'm just here alone." Again, my landlord bailed on me. So I, yeah.
Thank you for addressing, counsel.
Thanks.
Just for the council members who haven't been through one of these before, what we have typically done when we have someone who appears and objects to the assessment is that we have deferred, we have adopted the resolution excluding that item, and then staff provides you with the facts from staff's perspective at the next meeting, and then you can make a decision at that time. So if you want to do that, we would just need a motion to amend the resolution to remove 213 West Benton Street.
I move that we amend the resolution.
Second.
Moved by Thomas, seconded by Taylor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Seven to zero there.
So, sir, that means that this will come to the, your, your particular situation will be in front of the council on February 18th at their meeting.
And, and we have full name? Well, it would actually be under the
It's under his landlord's name, not his.
It's not Light Ridge?
Light Ridge, Iowa City. Yeah.
Why don't you give me your name, just so we have? You guys can go ahead and go.
Roll call on that, or not?
Okay. Do we need to do a roll call?
Yes.
All right. Any more discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Burgess?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Calee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Item number 17, announcement of vacancies previous. Civil Service Commission, one vacancy to fill a four-year term. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, March 17th, 2020. Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Vacancies will remain open until filled. Item number 18, community comment, we'll have Austin come up.
Hello there again, Austin Blue, UIG City Liaison. First, I would like to congratulate a UI student for conduct in last night's caucuses, so a big congratulations to Jocelyn Roof, a third-year student at the University of Iowa, for running the satellite caucus at Phillips Hall last night. I believe 318 people attended that one. Allowed them to participate with a, without a hitch, so big congrats to her. After that, there's a couple of upcoming university events of note. Susan Rice, former United States National Security Advisor and Permanent Representative to the United Nations, will be speaking at the Engler Theater on Wednesday, the 5th, so tomorrow at 7:30 PM, presented by the university lecture committee. And then singer-songwriter Roseanne Cash will be hosting Creative Matters Lecture at Hansher on Friday, the 7th of February, at 7:00 PM. I attended the last Creative Matters Lecture with Rachel Grimes of Ochsman, it was quite pleased, so I'd recommend going out to this one as well. And both events are free and open to the public. Next week will be the inaugural joint meeting between UIG and City Council, so I'm looking forward to that, and that's all I have. Thanks.
Great, thank you. I'm gonna go to City Council information, and we'll start with Councilor Weiner again.
So I mentioned earlier that the EC cog meeting, which was where they passed the budget. I also took the opportunity, the invitation to visit the Free Clinic, which anyone who has not had the opportunity to do it, I highly recommend it. There, it is, the, the range of services and specialty clinics, which they are now able to provide, is, is incredibly impressive, as well as just the, the number of people they are now being able to treat, people for existing and ongoing conditions, not just emergency conditions. So they're, they're a real plus for this city that we, as a council, I believe should be proud of funding. I also, along with, with Jeff, attended an event at Shelter House at Cross Park Place, where they were awarded, where they received a substantial amount of money that can potentially go to further, further developments similar to Cross Park Place, so helping house people who otherwise would never find housing, which is, I think, something else the city can be very proud of participating in. And a number of us, at least a couple of us, or several of us on council, also helped, either ran or helped run caucuses last night, which is why probably we're a little bit quiet this evening. And the last thing I noticed, that, that a couple of us were planning on attending the Chinese New Year celebration, which was postponed because of the, what is now essentially becoming a worldwide pandemic. So I think we just remain mindful of that and, and concerns and, and problems that some of our students may, may actually run into in either going home or having, having anyone visit them because of the curtailment now of travel between the US and China.
Last Saturday, several of us also attended the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem's wonderful open house, kicking off Black History Month and just acknowledging our leadership, so I thought that was fantastic, and you may have more comments about that. Coming up this Saturday is the United Way of Johnson and Washington Counties Hundred Year Celebration, which is a very large event, I think, at the Corvile Marriott that they've been planning for over a year, I think, so that's a neat thing. Tomorrow evening is the South District Neighborhood Association's monthly meeting, which will be held at Faith Academy, and this month, they are featuring a whole bunch of providers for youth programming for spring and summer. So anybody who wants to learn what's available, not just in the South District, but throughout our community, from all different kinds of organizations.
I will just mention one event on Sunday, the 9th, at 2:00 PM, as part of the Project Green series. Always kind of nice at this time of year to sort of beginning, begin to start looking a little bit ahead. There will be a presentation of a very famous Dutch garden designer. His work is being, going to be shown in a film. Sounds like an interesting event.
I've been out of town at conference, so I have nothing else to report.
Great, great.
Yeah, I don't have anything.
Janet's mentioned the caucuses, I'd like to commend anybody that did attend their caucus last night, either party, because it is something that's very unique to Iowa, and I think a lot of people enjoy it, and from what I hear, record number turnout last evening, so that's really great. One thing I wanted to mention, a couple of weeks ago, I was supposed to have my radio interview with Jerry Lawler, but I was disappointed to find out that the radio station was realigning things at their Iowa City location. And for all of you out there that were faithful listeners to that Wednesday morning city government program, thank you for listening. And Jerry Lawler, if you're listening in, thank you from all of us, who you, you always made us comfortable, and I was always impressed that you were on top of what happened in the city. You would even stay up late and watch these meetings, so that when you interviewed us on the Wednesday morning, you knew questions to ask us. So Jerry, I wish you the best in, in whatever career you're, you're now undertaking, and thank you for that. I just wanted to throw that out there. I, I think, I'll double-check with Susan, she always knows calendar dates, but I, I had on my calendar Thursday, February 13th, 5:00 is the annual Chamber Banquet. Is that, do I have that right?
13? I don't know, I'll have to look.
It wasn't 13?
It's the 13th.
Oh, the 13th, yeah, that's why I said Thursday, the 13th, the Chamber Banquet. Yes. Which is always a really great event. And I think that, that's all I have.
All right. And I wanted to say thanks to fellow counselors that were able to make it to our meet and greet us, as well as to those out there in the community that came out to say congrats and wish Mayor Pro Tem, Calee, and myself well as we do embark upon this new role this year. So we really appreciated everybody that came, and it was a great event, and so we're very appreciative. Also wanted to just make mention about all of the events that are happening this month around a Black History Month, and so I would encourage people to go out. I do know that this Saturday, the 15th, Humanize My Hoodie, that's Andre, that's gonna, that's gonna be at Old Brick, and that's gonna be from 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM, and that's, they've, they've wrote a book, and this'll be a screening, and so that's gonna be great. There are some more things happening throughout the month, and so I would encourage people to go out. And, and I know you may mention about the caucuses, thanks to all those that were a part of that. Getting out and making your votes known is really good, and I appreciate anyone that took the opportunity to go out and caucus. We're gonna go to City Manager.
Nothing.
I was just gonna remind this group that there are Police Officer Awards tomorrow at 10:00 in this room, so they'll be presenting various awards, Dickley Award and Officer of the Year at 10:00.
Great. Kelly? All right. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right, moved by Mims, seconded by Burgess. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? We are, motion passes seven to zero, we're adjourned.